Good evening. I call this regular meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Pledge of allegiance led by councilmember Eric Chan.
I see none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda orders amended?
I'll move it.
Okay, motion by councilman Harrington.
A second.
A second by vice mayor Menchaca. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We have no presentations this evening. The next item is public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. And Mr. Mayor, tonight we have a speaker who is present, a resident, Sue Fitzsimmons, but has lost her voice, so I will read for her if that's all right.
Please do. Thank you.
To Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor and City Council, and dear residents of the city of San Gabriel, I am writing to encourage you all to exercise your right to vote in the upcoming city council election. However, I must caution you to be wary of a few of the candidates who are promoting ideas that are not in the best interest of our city. The city council has worked tirelessly over the past several years to pull San Gabriel back from financial disaster, which has had a severe impact on both our fire and police departments. Through their hard work and expertise, significant positive progress has been made. We cannot afford to undo this progress by electing candidates who do not have the necessary qualifications and experience to make informed decisions regarding the complex affairs of city government. I urge you all to be informed voters. Research the candidates, their platforms, and their track records. Make a smart decision at the ballot box to ensure San Gabriel continues moving in a positive direction. The future of our community depends on it. And the next speaker is Roxanne Estrada.
Good evening. Hello, I know you guys know me. My name is Roxanne, and I am the owner of Luna's Restaurant. I'm here just to communicate the harassment that I've dealt with on these past years with the code enforcement named Maria Sanchez. She's addressed a lot of issues she's concerned with, and her delivery is very aggressive, and it is very...
Excuse me, sir. Can you just make noise from the audience, please?
I'm sorry?
No, no. I asked the audience not to make noise while you're speaking.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And the issues that she's addressed with us are things she's allegedly said that we're in violation. As we, she believed that we're in violation, I also see that other businesses are in the same violation, but other businesses are not being communicated or not being addressed. I am not here to talk about other businesses and their conduct because I am a business owner, and I know what it feels like to run a business and make it successful. However, what I am requesting is that they look into the business integrity of Maria Sanchez, as I believe she abuses her power of position, and she also believes she's somewhat above the law, the way she speaks to us. So this past, do I still have time? Or is my time up? Okay. So this past time, this past event that we had with the dumplings, she called the police on us three times. So having those three calls in front of all of our customers, it was a time where we really felt harassed. The police officers had to say, "I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do. They're not committing a crime." Even police officers had mentioned to us and says how they believe her conduct is. So because us as a community and police officers have the same experience with her, we would like the city to complete an investigation on how she conducts her business with business owners. I'm here to comply with anything the city wants, but we would like options, and we are requesting for fairness. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Frank Ye.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, and all the city staff and all the city council. My name is Frank, Frank Ye. I'm the resident of San Gabriel. Tonight, I would like to express my concern about this year's San Gabriel City Council election. The issue is, after I reviewed the candidate's statement and also my official ballot, I found out Mr. Horgetz Herrera Avila, the candidate, that some statement is misleading in the candidate's statements and the officially ballot. The candidate's statements show he is municipal manager. Translate in Chinese is "市政经理." That's his city manager. I'm just wondering, he is the current city manager of our San Gabriel or our city? And then, it doesn't match the official ballot. Official ballots show he is municipal sales manager. That caused me a surprise, and why the statement is, looked like it's a false statement for me. And also, another issue is more seriously, is Mr. Herrera printed in his campaign literary in Chinese version. I believe most of our voters have received his campaign, his campaign literary printed. He is currently served as San Gabriel City Council. I think this is not only misleading, this is a false statement of his campaign. That's why tonight I need to express my concern against this fall election issue. I hope the city government will respond to my concern and find out a solution for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Margaret. I'm sorry, Mary He.
Hi, good evening, city council members. My name is Mary He. I'm here to speak on behalf of Chinese-American voters regarding the city-approved council member candidate, Judge Herrera. Ms. Herrera has been used the title of city manager not just once, but repeatedly. He even used the title of council member of San Gabriel to attend an event. This is a lie. I can show everyone, that's a picture, said now is current city council member here. Right here. Okay. Is this, yeah, and I haven't seen the city make any corrections to his misconduct. Is the city giving this man the privilege to deserve your residence by allowing him to mislead voters with a fake title? Is, is, is simply targeting the Chinese community? Some voters have already mailed in their ballot, only to realize that the person they select is not the city manager. He is not even close, he's current unemployed. I urge the city to consider postponing the election and involving the LA County District Attorney's Office in the investigation. It is shameful that the city has allowed such a poor quality of election process. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jennifer Hong.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Councilmen. My name is Jennifer Hong, and I've been encouraging most of the Chinese-American citizens to register, to vote, and support the local election and local business. So it is for me, I look at the candidate, I want to talk about integrity. This is my major concern. When I talk to every voter, I don't care who you want to support, I think integrity is the most important character that a candidate should carry. So it is such a heartbreaking for me to see a candidate like George Herrera, who is running for council member, and continuously misleading, misleading the Chinese-American residents by claiming first to be the son-in-law of the Chinese, okay? This is the kind of title that he wanted to claim for himself, and falsely telling the voters that he is the city manager. I don't know how he can claim the title and give himself this kind of title. To me, this is kind of candidate has no integrity. Is this how the city ensures equal rights for voters who speak different languages? Because we know in San Gabriel, it's a very diversified city. Over sixty percent of the population is Asian, with many speakers speaking language like Mandarin, Chinese, or Vietnamese. These voters are reading their ballots and all the flyers, and in Mandarin, Chinese character is revised "city manager." In Chinese pronunciation is "市政经理." I don't know, I'm sorry if you don't know Mandarin, but I'm translating for you. And it clearly means city manager. In Mandarin, this word means exactly equals to city manager. The English version also shows Mr. Herrera has a municipal manager, which is both very confusing and misleading. This is a clear example of the city allowing a candidate to misuse a title to unfairly gain votes. Other candidates may not be aware of how this misrepresentation is affecting the Chinese-speaking community, but it is taking votes that should rightfully belong to them. So that's why I want to speak out here. With so many voters already have mailed in their ballots, absentee ballots, remaining silence will make the situation worse. So I encourage the city to reconsider stopping the election until this problem is properly addressed and resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Zig Jing.
My turn. Okay. I have something like other member to talk about it. Honorable Mayor, City Council Member, and City Manager, good evening. My name is Zig, last name is Z I A N G. I'm the president of HQH, AKA Chinese-American Equalization Association, and I'm here to raise the same concern as other about misleading title used by one of the candidate, George Herrera. Particularly on the Chinese version of the ballot, many, our member asked me about it. Why? Could it be two city manager for San Gabriel? Damn, I'd say no, there's no way, because, because the pay, and then, you know, a lot of stuff is cannot to be two, because a lot of decision made by one cannot make by two. So, the other thing I think about it, is that one is working for city mayor on the table, and one under the table, like that? No, cannot be, this is just a joke. Okay. From what I know, city of San Gabriel has only one city manager, which is Mark Lazaro. He is not running for city San Gabriel, for sure, because I double-checked online. So before I come out, I have to do some research, otherwise, oh, this guy's lying, this guy's misleading, I'm not. So everything is true. This is no ordinary wording for city manager in Chinese, and give the impression that current city mayor is running for office. The city has been doing well financially, and improvement in infrastructure development, transparency, and, and a lot of articles showing that how well the city is in progress, all under the leading of our great city council member, of course, city manager play a vital role in this success. City manager is, is better than all you guys as city member, because you decide, finally decide, because that's the council. So whoever you guys have a decision, please, Mark, can you, can you, for sure, right? You guys ask for Mark decision, right? So, so why is someone not even related to the city allowed to use municipal manager is translated in Chinese, in city manager in Chinese? Most Chinese voter has a right regardless of this title, and may vote for whoever's hold on it, because they think city manager do a lot of great job, because a lot, like, improve a lot of business, improve the street. So, because I do a lot, do dialogue king, so I had a lot of feedback. So I urge the city to clarify who is actually running, Mark or George? You have two people to serve, oh, yes, because you have to clarify, is it one city manager for city San Gabriel or two city manager? Is it the one working on the table or the one is work under the table? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Sophia Chan.
Good evening. Hello, I know you guys know me. My name is Roxanne, and I am the owner of Luna's Restaurant. I'm here just to communicate the harassment that I've dealt with on these past years with the code enforcement named Maria Sanchez. She's addressed a lot of issues she's concerned with, and her delivery is very aggressive, and it is very...
Excuse me, sir. Can you just make noise from the audience, please?
I'm sorry?
No, no. I asked the audience not to make noise while you're speaking.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And the issues that she's addressed with us are things she's allegedly said that we're in violation. As we, she believed that we're in violation, I also see that other businesses are in the same violation, but other businesses are not being communicated or not being addressed. I am not here to talk about other businesses and their contact, conduct, because I am a business owner, and I know what it feels like to run a business and make it successful. However, what I am requesting is that they look into the business integrity of Maria Sanchez, as I believe she abuses her power of position, and she also believes she's somewhat above the law, the way she speaks to us. So this past, do I still have time? Or is my time up? Okay. So this past time, this past event that we had with the dumplings, she called the police on us three times. So having those three calls in front of all of our customers, it was a time where we really felt harassed. The police officers had to say, "I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do, they're not committing a crime." Even police officers had mentioned to us and says how they believe her conduct is. So because us as a community and police officers have the same experience with her, we would like the city to complete an investigation on how she conducts her business with business owners. I'm here to comply with anything the city wants, but we would like options, and we are requesting for fairness. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Frank Ye.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, and all the city staff and all the city council. My name is Frank, Frank Ye. I'm the resident of San Gabriel. Tonight, I would like to express my concern about this year's San Gabriel City Council election. The issue is, after I reviewed the candidate's statement, and also my official ballot, I found out Mr. Horgetz Herrera Avila, the candidate, that some statement is misleading in the candidate's statements and the officially ballot. The candidate's statements show he is municipal manager. Translate in Chinese is "市政经理." That's his city manager. I'm just wondering, he is the current city manager of our San Gabriel or our city? And then, it doesn't match the official ballot. Official ballots show he is municipal sales manager. That caused me a surprise, and why the statement is, look like it's a false statement for me. And also, another issue is more seriously, is Mr. Herrera printed in his campaign literary in Chinese version. I believe most of our voters have received his campaign, his campaign literary printed. He is currently served as San Gabriel City Council. I think this is not only misleading, this is a false statement of his campaign. That's why tonight I need to express my concern against this fall election issue. I hope the city government will respond to my concern and find out a solution for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Margaret. I'm sorry, Mary He.
Hi, good evening, city council members. My name is Mary He. I'm here to speak on behalf of Chinese-American voters regarding the city-approved council member candidate, Judge Herrera. Ms. Herrera has been used the title of city manager not just once, but repeatedly. He even used the title of council member of San Gabriel to attend an event. This is a lie. I can show everyone, that's a picture, said now is current city council member here. Right here. Okay. Is this, yeah, and I haven't seen the city make any corrections to his misconduct. Is the city giving this man the privilege to deserve your residence by allowing him to mislead voters with a fake title? Is, is, is simply targeting the Chinese community? Some voters have already mailed in their ballot, only to realize that the person they select is not the city manager. He is not even close, he's current unemployed. I urge the city to consider postponing the election and involving the LA County District Attorney's Office in the investigation. It is shameful that the city has allowed such a poor quality of election process. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jennifer Hong.
Good evening, honorable mayor and honorable councilman. My name is Jennifer Hong, and I've been encouraging most of the Chinese-American citizens to register, to vote, and support the local election and local business. So it is for me, I look at the candidate, I want to talk about integrity. This is my major concern. When I talk to every voter, I don't care who you want to support, I think integrity is the most important character that a candidate should carry. So it is such a heartbreaking for me to see a candidate like George Herrera, who is running for council member, and continuously misleading, misleading the Chinese-American residents by claiming first to be the son-in-law of the Chinese, okay? This is the kind of title that he wanted to claim for himself, and falsely telling the voters that he is the city manager. I don't know how he can claim the title and give himself this kind of title. To me, this is kind of candidate has no integrity. Is this how the city ensures equal rights for voters who speak different languages? Because we know in San Gabriel, it's a very diversified city. Over sixty percent of the population is Asian, with many speakers speaking language like Mandarin, Chinese, or Vietnamese. These voters are reading their ballots and all the flyers, and in Mandarin, Chinese character is revised "city manager." In Chinese pronunciation is "市政经理." I don't know, I'm sorry if you don't know Mandarin, but I'm translating for you. And it clearly means city manager. In Mandarin, this word means exactly equals to city manager. The English version also shows Mr. Herrera has a municipal manager, which is both very confusing and misleading. This is a clear example of the city allowing a candidate to misuse a title to unfairly gain votes. Other candidates may not be aware of how this misrepresentation is affecting the Chinese-speaking community, but it is taking votes that should rightfully belongs to them. So that's why I want to speak out here. With so many voters already have mailed in their ballots, absentee ballots, remaining silence will make the situation worse. So I encourage the city to reconsider stopping the election until this problem is properly addressed and resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Zig Jing.
My turn. Okay. I have the same thing like other member to talk about it. Honorable Mayor, City Council Member, and City Manager, good evening. My name is Zig, last name is Z I A N G. I'm the president of HQH, AKA Chinese-American Equalization Association, and I'm here to raise the same concern as other about misleading title used by one of the candidate, George Herrera. Particularly on the Chinese version of the ballot, many, our member asked me about it. Why? Could it be two city manager for San Gabriel? Damn, I'd say no, there's no way, because, because the pay, and then, you know, a lot of stuff is cannot to be two, because a lot of decision made by one cannot make by two. So, the other thing I think about it, is that one is working for city mayor on the table, and one under the table, like that? No, cannot be, this is just a joke. Okay. From what I know, city of San Gabriel has only one city manager, which is Mark Lazaro. He is not running for city San Gabriel, for sure, because I double-checked online. So before I come out, I have to do some research, otherwise, oh, this guy's lying, this guy's misleading, I'm not. So everything is true. This is no ordinary wording for city manager in Chinese, and give the impression that current city mayor is running for office. The city has been doing well financially, and improvement in infrastructure development, transparency, and, and a lot of articles showing that how well the city is in progress, all under the leading of our great city council member, of course, city manager play a vital role in this success. City manager is, is better than all you guys as city member, because you decide, finally decide, because that's the council. So whoever you guys have a decision, please, Mark, can you, can you, for sure, right? You guys ask for Mark decision, right? So, so why is someone not even related to the city allowed to use municipal manager is translated in Chinese, in city manager in Chinese? Most Chinese voter has a right regardless of this title, and may vote for whoever's hold on it, because they think city manager do a lot of great job, because a lot, like, improve a lot of business, improve the street. So, because I do a lot, do dialogue king, so I had a lot of feedback. So I urge the city to clarify who is actually running, Mark or George? You have two people to serve, oh, yes, because you have to clarify, is it one city manager for city San Gabriel or two city manager? Is it the one working on the table or the one is work under the table? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Sophia Chan.
Good evening. I'm Sophia Chan, and my honor and pleasure to be meeting all the honorable mayor, vice mayor, and all the city council members. And I'm not here to talk about Herrera, but I am here to talk about the San Marino Rotary Club and lunch invitations to all of you. The reason that I am appearing here in the San Gabriel City Council floor is because you are the service-minded individuals, for sure, to be wanting to be sitting where you are and helping the city. And the Rotary Club is about service-minded individuals. The San Marino Rotary Club has had a long history in the city of San Marino, and I was voluntold, they volunteered and told me to, to come and approach cities that do not have a Rotary Club yet. So my invitation is open to everyone here. In fact, our San Marino Rotary Club has all of the city council members being part of either active attendees or their members. And lunches is on us, not once, not twice, three lunches, and they're not dry sandwiches, okay? They are gourmet meal, and I'd like to see if I can possibly send this to you and to the city clerk, maybe to pass this out to...
The next speaker is Sophia Chan.
I'm Sophia Chan and my honor and pleasure to be meeting all the honorable mayor, vice mayor, and all the city council members. And I'm not here to talk about Herrera, but I am here to talk about the San Marino Rotary Club and lunch invitations to all of you. The reason that I am appearing here in the San Gabriel City Council floor is because you are the service-minded individuals for sure to be wanting to be sitting where you are and helping the city. And the Rotary Club is about service-minded individuals. The San Marino Rotary Club has had a long history in the city of San Marino and I was voluntold, they volunteered and told me to, to come and approach cities that do not have a Rotary Club yet. So my invitation is open to everyone here. In fact, our San Marino Rotary Club has all of the city council members being part of either active attendees or their members. And lunches is on us, not once, not twice, three lunches, and they're not dry sandwiches. Okay? They are gourmet meal. And I'd like to see if I can possibly send this to you and to the city clerk maybe to pass this out to our esteemed city council member. And then this is my little personal card. If you have any question to either email me, text me, call me. It's a younger picture of me, so don't mind too much, but, but then you'll know that's me, that's Sophia. And I'd like to invite all of you, anybody who is service-minded. We meet the Thursdays, every Thursday, so we welcome you. Come and join us for lunch. I have the brochures, okay? Come and grab it from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Rotary loves anybody who is service-minded. Please pass it around.
The next speaker is Cheryl Cabot.
First, let me state that candidate Jorge Herrera or George E. Herrera or Jorge Herrera Avila, depending on what documents or posting you read, does not have a close relationship with the truth. This is becoming more and more apparent the last few months. It was first brought to my attention a few months ago about a Chinese publication. I have copies of this for all of you where it states that it is a current city consular who is obviously not. More recently, he was let go by his employer, Public Republic Services, but on his social media accounts, he still states he is employed by them. He is currently unemployed, which begs the question, how does he loan himself $85,000 plus for his campaign? Even more disturbing, other candidates and their supporters are coming up against his lies while they are campaigning. He has been telling voters that he is the only candidate endorsed by the police department. This is a blatant lie. The only candidate endorsed by the POA are Karina Rivera and Council Member Tony Ding. This can be verified by the POA Facebook page where this is stated. He is also telling some Chinese residents that he is the current mayor of San Gabriel, another blatant and obvious lie. Other candidates feel like they are playing whack-a-mole trying to dispel all his lies. In other instances where he has stretched the truth, he said he introduced the idea of a farmer's market two years ago. Actually, it was Council Member Tony Ding, commissioner at the time, who introduced the idea and pushed it back for, pushed for it back in 2018. He also said, "I brought to light the poor conditions of our streets," as if anyone who lives, works, or even drives through San Gabriel wasn't aware of our poor street conditions. The city was certainly aware of it, but budget constraints made it difficult. But now, street improvements have been and are being made by the city as stated by San Gabriel Public Works Director Greg DeVink. In the past three years, the city has paved 20.7 miles with rubberized asphalt. Four years ago, we applied 12.2 miles of slurry and ARAM. All that was done without any input from George. And finally, he says, "He brought attention to the condition of our swimming pool." This is an insult to the community services and Rebecca Perez, who have been working for years to attain funding and grants to improve or rebuild our swimming pool. As I stated at the beginning, George does not have a close relationship with the truth. In an election year, truth matters. Facts are important. Truth is important, and George's blatant lying needs to be stopped.
Can you hand this off?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comment.
So do we, so no more speaker card?
Correct.
Okay. Good. Then next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received a request from the public to pull an item.
Would any council member like to pull an item for separate discussion? I see none.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Vice Mayor Manchaca and seconded by Council Member Chen. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next, next item, please.
Public hearing. 405 South Delmar Avenue Planning Case Number GPA 24-001, ZZ 24-002, Density Bonus and Street Vacation. Applicant, The Related Companies of California.
I now open the continued public hearing. Planning Manager Samantha Tivazart will make the staff presentation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This is a first public hearing. It's, it's not a continued public hearing, just for clarification. Again, the subject property is 405 South Delmar Avenue. And the subject property, as shown on the map, is located on the northwest corner of South Delmar Avenue and Main Street. The property is designated Light Industrial in the General Plan and Zone Light Manufacturing M1, as shown on the map. Surrounding properties to the north of the site includes the South Pacific Railroad and M1 Zone properties. South is our one single-family residence, east our R2 low-density multifamily residence, and west are M1 properties. So as shown on the map here, there is a mixture of different types of zones around the subject property. This is a view of the property looking north from Main Street. And a little bit of history on the property, as shown on the slide, between 1925 and 1938, the site was vacant. Between 1948 and 1989, the site was operated by Mullin Lumber. In 1991, the site was then operated by All-Aboard Self-Storage. Then in 2011, the Alameda Corridor East Construction Authority acquired the property on behalf of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government, the SGV COG. Between 2014 and 2018, all the existing structures on the property were demolished. Then in 2018, at the end of the Alameda Corridor East, the ACE trench project, the SGV COG declared the project site as surplus property. And since 2019, the SGV COG has been working with the city on potentially bringing a, an affordable housing project to the commission and ultimately to the city council. This is a proposed rendering of the project and staff is not going to be discussing the architectural style in-depth. The project team does have their own presentation this evening and they'll cover some of that information. Their project architect is present this evening. The project includes, the project site is approximately 70,000 square feet, which is approximately 1.62 acre in size. And the proposed project includes 73 residential apartment units, and it's designated for senior affordable housing. 62 on-grade parking space is proposed as part of the project, as well as 8700 square feet of common open space. The entitlements required for this project includes a general plan amendment, zone change, density bonus requests, and street vacation. The application is subject to Planning Commission recommendation and then to city council for review and approval, and then precise plan of design by the Design Review Commission. This is site plan, showing the proposed layout of the site. Again, it is a linear property. The lot is not very deep, although it is, as mentioned, 1.62 acre in size. The proposed density bonus requests and also the request for incentives and concessions includes an additional six feet to the height, so 41 feet instead of 35 feet, setbacks of five feet setbacks on the side. So instead of 10 feet on the street side and 15 feet on the interior side, the request is for five feet setbacks, also for open space and for the bedroom size to be the size that they are proposed, and as well as development impact fee waivers. The development standards, as mentioned, so the proposed request includes a zone change amendment as well as land use. And just to go over the standards really quick, the current M1 zoning does not have a minimum lot size requirement. The change to R3, the minimum requirement is 10,000. And again, the subject property is 1.62 square feet in size. Residential density does not apply in the M1 zone. In R3, it would be 40 units that are allowed. And again, the density bonus allows for the proposed 73 units. The maximum building height in the M1 zone is two stories, 35 feet, whereas in R3 is three stories, 35 feet. So the height is relatively similar with the additional incentive requests. Lot coverage does, there is not lot coverage in the M1 zone. In R3, 60%, but the project site is proposing 35% maximum floor area, 50% in M1. There is not a limitation FAR in R3, but the project is at .9. And the setbacks as shown here, there are no setback requirements in the M1 zone. In the R3, there are setback requirements. The proposed project provides more setbacks in the front and the rear and is asking for the concession of five feet on the sides. Parking requirement is determined by use of the property in the M1 zone. In the R3, it is .75 for senior housing. The requirement is 55 without a guest parking requirement, and the number of provided spaces is 62. In addition, the project is, includes a street vacation of approximately 12 feet, as shown on the slide. And the project also includes, has provided a proximity, a proximity map, excuse me, to show that within a one-half mile radius of the proposed project site, there are amenities for the occupants of the project, including the San Gabriel Library is located within that radius, as well as Smith Park, the post office, a bank, the San Gabriel Valley Medical Center, a gas station, a pharmacy, the adult recreation center, and also a supermarket. So it is an ideal location with a lot of amenities located within one-half mile of the project site. As shown here, the project is consistent with the general plan, both in land use, also in all of the housing objectives, including providing a range of housing types, again encouraging affordable housing, removing government constraints, and also promoting fair housing access and opportunity. Also, the project is designed with quality architecture. The project has been reviewed by the city architect several times and based on the city council's determination will ultimately be reviewed by the Design Review Board. It also meets the community design goals. The proposed project was reviewed per the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and the project is exempt from CEQA per Section 21080.40, Definitions of Affordable Housing Projects and Rezoning Exemptions. As shown on the slide, this is a relatively new exemption, AB 1449, which became effective in 2024. And again, this is a part of the exemptions and additional state laws to provide, to provide for affordable housing development. The proposed project was reviewed by the Planning Commission on September 9th of this year, and the Planning Commission agreed to recommend that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance with a 5-0 vote. The, this meeting was notice, notification was mailed within a 500-foot radius, posted at the site, and also a city hauled the post office and the library and was published in the San Gabriel Senate. And so with that, staff's recommendation this evening is for the city council to conduct a public hearing and to discuss the proposed ordinance, number 714, waive full reading and introduce ordinance number 714 by title only, which states an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Gabriel, California approving planning case number GPA 24-001, ZZ 24-002, density bonus, street vacation, to allow for a 100% affordable senior housing development at 405 South Delmar Avenue, subject to the conditions of approval, and to waive future reading and schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next regular city council meeting. The ordinance would then become effective 30 days after the adoption. This concludes staff's presentation. As mentioned, the applicant team is present this evening, and they also have their presentation for the city council.
Thank you, Samantha. Does any council member have questions to, for staff to clarify? I'm sorry. Would you like to go first? Excuse me. Good. Okay. So any, any council member has questions for, for staff to clarify? No? I see none. Do we have any public comments? Speaker card.
We do. Mr. Mayor, would you like public comment first or the applicant's presentation first?
The presentation. Thank you.
I'm very pleased to be here today to present to you the San Gabriel Senior Apartments located at 405 South Delmar Avenue. It's been a pleasure working with the city staff, the Planning Manager Samantha Tivazart, the Community Development Director Aldo Cervantes, and of course, the city manager Mark as well. My name is Jennifer Ingaram, and I'm work, I work with Related California and been with the company for close to six years now. Do I? I'm the one controlling it. Okay. Thank you. I wanted to start off with introducing to you who Related is. Related, we have developed, operated, and own 20,700-plus residential units, of which 15,500-plus affordable housing units have been completed, and we've completed over 3,500 senior affordable units. And right now, we have about 4,600-plus affordable pipeline units. And we pride ourselves in not only developing the brick and mortar, but also we want to have our projects be award-winning designs, and we've secured over 140 design awards in the past. We have over 34 years of experiencing, of experience developing affordable housing. As a matter of fact, the company got started as an affordable housing developer. And you see some photos right here of projects that we've completed in the past. I want to direct your attention to the bottom left, Affordable Senior Development called Luxera in Irvine. It is the similar style that we are introducing to, to the city of San Gabriel today. And the next slide is another, just quick, other projects that we've done that have lasted through the test of time. These are our affordable senior developments. Just wanted to showcase that it looks great. Related, Related Management Company is our management company arm. They were founded in 1974. Currently, they have 400 developments or 50,000 units under management, of which 7,000 affordable units are under management in California. And in LA County specifically, we have about 1,790 affordable units under management. We pride ourselves in being compliance experts. All of our affordable housing projects have some form of government funding, so we have to have a deep understanding of HUD, state, and local housing authority regulations. We need to be in full compliance with the LIHTC or tax credit program, and we pride ourselves in having a good and great track record in the ability to lease up quickly. But without further ado, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the project itself. The project located at 405 South Delmar in San Gabriel is located on the northeast corner of South Delmar and West Main Street. It is currently vacant, and it is an undeveloped land. We have some pretty great project goals for the project. We are very excited that this is going to be the very first affordable housing project in the city of San Gabriel. A couple years ago, the city was the one that identified this site as a potential affordable housing site, and we have been very blessed to work with the city to get to where we are today. We want to make sure that the project is high-quality affordable senior housing with an award-winning design. We want to provide a range of affordability and serve vulnerable populations. We want to make sure that we have a sustainable design that fits the neighborhood context. Not only that, we care about the services and the amenities that we will be providing to our residents. And last but not least, we want to make sure that the project itself is secure and safe for our residents. A little bit more about the project. This is going to be a 100 affordable senior housing project. What that means for us is that it's going to be rental units, not for sale. What that means for us is that it's going to be rental units, not for sale. The project is composed of 73 units, of which 72 units are for low-income seniors with one manager for an onsite full-time property manager. The unit mix includes 11 studios, 52 bedrooms, and 10 two-bedrooms, and there are 62 onsite parking spaces, and up to 50% of the units will be set aside for seniors with special needs. And all of the units will be income restricted. A little bit more about the proposed amenities. We are proposing to include a fitness center, actually, a couple of community rooms, an outdoor courtyard, onsite laundry facilities, so that our residents can do laundry onsite. We have bike storage. We're going to have a community garden, a tech room, and every unit will have central heating AC, as well as in-unit Energy Star appliances, including refrigerators, stove, hood range, and the likes. In addition to that, that I didn't include in the presentation, but I'd like to mention, is that this project will be Chapter 11B compliant with American Disability Act, of which 50% of the units will be mobility units, while the other 50% will be what we call adaptable units, so that the seniors that live in those units can age in place, as in we can easily adapt those units to be mobility units. I'd like to introduce my architect, Henry Tong, who's the principal of Studio T-Squared, to discuss a little bit about the project design.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. As Jennifer said, this is the first affordable senior housing project in the city of San Gabriel. So we are, we took extra care in the design of this project, so it will fit within the urban fabric of this city. So that's why we chose the scale and also the detailing and architectural style to fit within, to fit within the city. So the, if you look at the design, we tried to kind of play with the design of the exteriors to be similar with the city center, the city hall, and also the playhouse in this, in this area. And also, the Spanish and Irving Gill style is predominant in the San Gabriel Mission area, so we, we spend a lot of time doing detailing and to make sure the window proportions and the, the architecture character is, you know, compliant with the neighborhood. And the building is actually designed as two separate buildings with parking on both ends, and in the middle, there'll be a communal garden so that the senior could share in the communal activities. And also, there's also a communal garden at the corner of Delmar and Main, so that they could grow their vegetables and stuff like that. And also, we have balconies facing the main street, so that there's kind of like a scale, this is kind of like a scale to the neighborhood. And also, by narrowing the street, we actually make it a little bit more safer, because right now, the street is a bit wide, so narrowing it can be, make it more pedestrian-friendly. And with that, I just wanted to bring Jennifer back to the community outreach.
Thank you, Henry. Last but not least, I wanted to touch a little bit about our community outreach efforts that we've done thus far. Early on in the process, we met with a number of local stakeholders, including Asian Youth Center, who is here today, San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity, Happy 50 Plus, and a lot more stakeholders that were recommended from word of mouth that we should meet with. And as a result of interviewing and talking with the key stakeholders, we put together what we called a community needs assessment, in which we've also given to the city staff. And what the community need assessment does say, if I may read to you some of the conclusions, is that new affordable housing developments are a top priority in the city of San Gabriel. Seniors must be prioritized due to a higher need of support with little opportunity to change income status and lack of options for independent living. Overcrowding for renters must be addressed. And so, and so based on this community needs assessments, that's how we determine that the best target population for this project ought to be seniors. And from that, we have conducted two open houses so far that have been very, very well attended. The first open house was conducted on April 2nd, 2024, at the Blossom Market Hall, and there were 71 attendees. And we had a second open house due to the high demand that was here at the city council chambers, and next door, we had poster boards, as you can see, these are some of the photos, and we had 118 attendees. Through this community outreach effort, we've opened up a dedicated Google Voice, Voice Number and voicemail that tenants or potential tenants can leave questions for us, and we also have a dedicated email. As part of the open houses, we have also provided project fact sheets or leave behinds if anybody in the audience here would like to take some, so that they can know a little bit more about the project. I'm happy to distribute it. But these flyers are in English, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and Spanish. What you don't see right here might be hard to see, but in all of our open houses, we had translators. Although the presentation was in English, the translators were speaking to the transponders for our attendees. With that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So before we proceed to the speaker cards and public comment, does any council member have a question for Jennifer? I see none. Thank you very much for the presentation. So Chief City Card, do we have the public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Before we start the in-person speakers, please note that council has received a written comment in support from Amanda Lee, representing Happy 50 Plus Foundation, and written comments in opposition from residents Alfred and Ron Esquemia, Orlando Romo, DC, and BC. The first in-person speaker is Manuel Orozco.
My name is Manuel Orozco. I live at 114 West Angelino. I lived there since I was a child, purchased the real estate from my parents. And the reason why I purchased it, because I felt San Gabriel was a nice place to retire and grow in my family, which it is, but now it's getting very congested with traffic, trash. And we're not protecting our best resource, which is water, and development is not conservation as governance nuisance continues with these nonsense. But the question of the matter here is that another thing that brings them to mind is they're building this structure, but they haven't given any specifications on that structure against that train wall and see how much that wall can handle as far as pressure is concerned. Another thing, when you're at an age of 60 and over, the last thing you need is a train to rumble by your ears. You need peace and quiet, and that's no place for an elderly person to be, due because of health conditions or mental condition. Another thing is our parking. We're going to have a lot of issues with parking. Yes, I see that they have parking for residents, but of course, they're going to have community services there, and they're going to be looking for parking all along Main Street and Angelino and anywhere they can park. That's my other concern. The management of the property. There're going to be also emergencies, which, you know, an ambulance is not going to go in quiet. It's going to be loud, and we hear it all the time. You can see San Gabriel has a lot of community, a lot of people. So of course, with people comes a lot of traffic and noise. I can't stress that enough. Since I've been living there, it's been increasing and increasing and increasing. So, you know, that's the only thing I have to say, and among other things, but I don't want to tie up the members in council, because it's going to take forever for me to explain this. So anyway, thank you so much for your time, and I hope you take my words into consideration as you vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dale Hopkins.
Hi, good, this is my first time, so bear with me. I have a couple of questions, a couple of concerns. The one thing is, we've always had a problem with, with parking, okay? I've lived in San Gabriel for 30 years. I can't even park in front of my house, and we don't even have enough parking spots for each one of the places that you're going to have seniors in there. Now, by senior, I mean, we all think, oh, seniors, you know, they don't get out much. I'm almost 70, you know, so it's like seniors aren't seniors anymore. We're still very active, you know, very, you know. So most of the families are going to have two cars, okay? So that doesn't even compute even close. I know they talk about special needs. Are we talking about special needs as far as like handicap, or are we talking about SSI? Are we talking about emotional, mental disabilities? I mean, all those things have to do with what quality of people that are going to be moving in there. You know, I'm really close to that, you know? I'm on Angelino, okay? So that's my concern. I brought my kids up in this, in San Gabriel, and it was excellent. I couldn't say, it's been an excellent city for me. I mean, I love living here. I just, I don't want it to go downfall. I was a property manager for many years of my life before I came into San Gabriel, and I've seen what happens to, to areas and stuff like that when they're not really rigid on the qualifications and everything like that of the people that they let move in. I don't want that to happen to San Gabriel. I really don't. That's, that's pretty much my main concern, and that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Roy Rosell.
I know, members of the city council, my name is Roy Rosell. I'm a war veteran from Vietnam, to give you an idea how old I am. I'm a family and community advocate in the City of San Gabriel Family Resource Center, San Gabriel Unified School District. I was also a health and public policy manager for the HNU Center. We were able to implement in the whole San Gabriel Valley, smoke-free parks and a tobacco retail license. For years, I have operated on emergency food, but today, I'm focusing more in housing. Most of the people who had tried to find homes of a single mom with two kids are war veterans. Tonight, with all these amazing members of AWC, HNU Center, we are here to advocate for this new public housing development in San Gabriel that will also provide social services for elder residents. We can not only see, but we can also feel the lack of affordable housing. But what a relief to see that this city, and now this city council, is taking a proactive steps towards addressing this urgent and critical need. We not only strongly support the San Gabriel Senior Apartments, but strongly urge honorable council members to approve this important urgent lifesaving project. The City of San Gabriel has this amazing opportunity to lead by example. By supporting the San Gabriel Senior Apartments, you will be giving back to the elder HNU community who have contributed for so many years to San Gabriel. Let's unite in this effort, creating affordable decent space where seniors can live with dignity and security. And you have heard this before, never doubt that a small group of thoughtful committed citizens can change the world. It's the only thing that ever has. Thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for serving our country.
The next speaker is Carlos Alvarado.
Hi, council, mayor, my name is Carlos Alvarado. I've lived in San Gabriel all my life on Sunset. I don't necessarily oppose this, this project, but I do have concerns. One of them was what someone has spoke about already, is that traffic that could be increased on Delmar, as it already has been increased the last year or so. It's more difficult to get out of my street these days because of the increased traffic. We're going to have more traffic if we put more people in that area. The other thing is, what, I understand you've notified people within 500 feet of the project, but what about the people that live outside of the 500-foot radius? The streets of Sunset, Angelino, people on Main Street, people on other streets in the area? That's, this is going to impact us also. You talk about parking, there isn't enough parking in San Gabriel, as it is. I know somebody that can benefit from this project also. She is a senior citizen, plays on San Bernardino, she'd love to come back to San Gabriel to live where she grew up and live, and her family is still here. My concern is, will she have an opportunity to actually get into this place if it's actually comes to fruition? So my concerns are those. I also suggest, and I request, that you put this off, because not enough people know about this. I've talked to people on Main Street, across the street from the project, that don't know about it. Is there something, is this something that you guys are trying to sneak by? You know, I know that we've had meetings, but what people are the ones that attend these meetings? Are the people from the neighborhoods? It's, you know, and what cultures are attending these meetings? So those are my concerns. I can request that you put this off. Do not vote on this today. And I would like a full reading on this, and I would like a second reading on this also, because I think it's important to the citizens of San Gabriel that we know exactly what's going to happen, and that we have a chance to make more comments on it, because I know there are people that aren't necessarily against it, but that have an opinion on it. Thanks.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jaime Ramos.
Thank you for your time, mayor, city councilman. I'm similar to other folks here. I grew up in San Gabriel and eventually purchased a house that we grew up in from my parents' estate. I'm not necessarily against the development. I understand economics and the fact that there's just more people in California, and we want to make, you know, California an affordable city. But similar to some of the gentlemen earlier, I have concerns about traffic and about the sort of folks that might end up living in San Gabriel. I tend to think that, you know, we should always lend a hand and help folks, but at the same time, I think with that comes responsibilities. And so like, I tend to think we need to have more input to make sure that there's safeguards. So if somebody ends up living there, you know, just last week, I caught somebody across the street trying to burglarize my neighbors. I don't want more of that to occur, you know? Would there be, you know, if it's low-income housing and some of the folks moving in are transgressing on the neighborhood, I mean, are there provisions to have them evicted? I mean, with rights come responsibilities. So, you know, a lot of my concerns have to do with, yeah, the traffic, the density, and just the quality of neighbors that we could expect in the future. So thank you for your time, and I hope you consider my thoughts.
Thank you.
Estella Garcia.
I am here just because, just like someone else said, I've lived here in the city of San Gabriel my whole life, and I only live a block away from where this is going to occur. I myself received the notices, and I did not realize what was going on. I did not go to the open houses, and so I had no clue what was going on until I actually read one of the notices a little bit more, and I realized the impact this is going to have on me and my family. and I realized the impact this is gonna have on me and my family. The fact that the, uh, they have suggested making Main Street narrower so that this building can be built means that I'm going to have more traffic. And on my street, there are several other children. Not only that, but the impact on parking. Not only that, but if this is really gonna be a senior living, this is in an area that is very busy, as in you've got Mission and you've got Del Mar, which is, uh, quick traffic that's moving. The people won't be able to get out of there very easily, the train noise as well. And honestly, I just believe that it's gonna change the dynamics of San Gabriel. I understand low-income housing, but I also understand that sometimes with the low-income housing comes people that, um, have not had the best reputation. And, uh, it might change the dynamics of the safety of our neighborhood. So I wish that the Council would reconsider and allow us more time for the neighbors that are gonna be directly impacted by this decision to actually be able to know what's going on. I know that the notices have been placed, but I know for a fact that some of those notices, most of the residents that live in that area do not speak the language and have not able, when I've talked to different people in my neighborhood, they were not aware of what was going on because of the notices. They may not go to the library with their child because they're a little worried. So I would like to have, uh, more time to have the neighborhood actually understand what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kishi Chahil.
City Council members, thank you for letting me, uh, have my say today. I actually just moved to San Gabriel about two years ago. And what my concerns are actually in regards to this development is about the increase in traffic and congestion like everybody else. It's, since the last two years, I noticed there's been a huge increase, actually. And the police department has really been working hard to reduce, uh, a lot of the nonsense that's been happening across when, um, we have, uh, drivers that actually do not slow down. I also am afraid that the strain on the local resources and services. I know that, uh, senior housing will require medical, emergency, public transportation services, and that will definitely be a strain on our neighborhood itself. So, the parking seems to be a biggest problem here, too. Uh, I understand, and I'm looking at the math here for sixty-two parking, uh, slots. I don't believe that is actually true, because you're going to have families coming over. The, the streets will be, um, endured with more parking, uh, more cars. And you must understand that the, uh, road is going to be reduced in size. Hence, it is gonna be an issue, actually. Noise level, construction, uh, ongoing requirements is going to increase. My biggest problem is also that, uh, I, I believe it's a seven AM construction time here, uh, start construction time in San Gabriel, which mean for months, we are actually going to be, uh, enduring the noise complaints, actually. Now, one of the other biggest thing I feel is that the impact on schools and community facilities. So, although, uh, senior, uh, members may not directly impact schools, additional residents would actually lead to crowding in other communities, like facilities in a park, libraries, and the recreational, uh, centers. At the moment, I've visited the recreational centers a number of times, and it's a completely, extremely crowded. And the, the, what is, uh, another concern is the environmental impact. You know, new construction is definitely going to be, uh, disrupting the ecosystem, increased pollution. There's gonna be a reduction in grain space. I actually would propose a neighborhood garden in that area rather than anything else, and I'm happy to help with that. Member and Councils, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michelle Furrage.
Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. I'm Michelle Furrage, the Executive Director of the Asian Youth Center. Our facility, our main facility, is right across the railroad tracks, um, from the proposed site. And, um, we've been there for a little over thirty years. I myself have been employed there and been working here in San Gabriel for twenty years. And, um, we have seen a real change in local demographics in the last four years, and an increase in the number of seniors, especially low-income seniors. We're called the Asian Youth Center, and our mission is to provide, uh, after-school programming, social and employment services for low-income immigrant youth and families. But in the last four years, we've started serving seniors in significant numbers because of the changing demographics and the need that we see. It started with the emergency food program during lockdown, and continued with COVID education, broadband access, uh, utility, low-income utility access, the Stop Asian Hate work. And now, we have funding from the Department of Mental Health to do health and wellness programming with seniors ages sixty-five and plus. So, we are, um, delighted to submit a letter of support for this project. And, um, if I can hand that to you. Probably should have done that earlier. Thank you. And we would, uh, encourage City Council to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Chung.
Good evening, Council Members, Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Diana Chung. Um, I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, and I'm a program director at Asian Youth Center. And contrary to the name, I'm the one that's tasked with working, um, with seniors sixty-five and up in the San Gabriel Valley. So, in the work that we've been doing with seniors, we've also been doing needs assessments. Separate from, um, the pro, the project development, we're doing needs assessment really based on ideas of wellness, to be able to identify protective factors and risk factors that impact, uh, the mental health of our seniors, but also their families and the community. So that's really been the, the bulk of the work that I've been doing, um, i- at AYC. And what we're learning is that seniors really want to stay together. Isolation, especially after COVID, has impacted our seniors, but the, the residue continues. And so, one of the things that we're, we're doing is finding ways for folks to be able to be together, stay active, and have access to the resources in the community. As Michelle mentioned, we are in the radius of this new development. And, um, if built, we will continue to be able to serve seniors, and we will walk there. We will not congest the traffic. We will walk there and continue to provide these services for seniors in the community. This, I think, in service, social services and in the work of mental health, one of the things that we have notoriously felt very helpless around is housing. We can do all we can to be able to support people emotionally and build relationships, but we do not have the infrastructure to be able to house people so that they have the basic needs to be able to do that further healing. And so, um, in my, in my view, this is a potential solution to a lot of the issues that our community needs at this time. And so I request that you kindly approve this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Flores.
Hello, good evening, uh, City Council Members and Mayor. Sorry, I'm new to this, so bear with me, please. My name is Carlos Flores, and I am a member of the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters. I live in the local area and was also born at, uh, San Gabriel Hospital. The city should require the project to be built utilizing a local, skilled, and trained workforce. Local higher skilled and trained workforce requirements reduce, uh, construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the, uh, local economy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Debbie Kilgore.
Hello, Council Members. I don't think this is a property that should be housing. It's a very dangerous piece of property. I used it first when I moved here for storage, and it's very narrow. And I'm concerned with this building is, what are you putting behind the building? Are you putting a brick wall up there? Because seniors, as they get older, get confused. They may function perfectly, but they do have areas of confusion. They may go outside and get lost or problems. So, I'm really concerned about that back area for the railroad tracks. Because they, if you've just got a fence up there, people do, they climb fences, they do crazy things. And I've just worked with people that, with seniors for so long. And number two, um, how come there's only one laundry place? How come there's no laundry in the apartments for each of the tenants? Because how many of you wanna use the same laundry room every day? How many of you wanna have a back porch that's a cement wall? And the other thing, it's, um, that street is very busy because people go up and down that side street there. And, uh, it's just not a safe area at all, really. Because people take that side street down, they miss the busyness of Mission Drive and that, so. But, and the main thing that I keep not hearing anybody say, it's, housing is priced right for seniors. I want to know what the rent is gonna cost. How much is a studio gonna cost? How much is a one-bedroom or two-bedroom? Seniors don't make much money, don't get much money in. I get forty thousand dollars a year. That's how much I live. I'm retired, and I live on retirement only. So, you tell me how much that is going to cost anybody there? You're afraid to give the answers, so are the builders. And if you look at apartments that are for rent, a one-bedroom, a studio today, they're two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars, things like that. So, and you don't even have laundry facility. So, the senior is gonna wanna go downstairs and do their senior, uh, their laundry down in a laundry room they have to share with so many people. It's just, it's just not an appropriate building, and it's very dangerous because of the railroad tracks there, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the public comment.
Okay. So now I close the public hearing. And it's now time for council deliberations and discussion. Who would like to start?
I guess I'll start.
Vice Mayor, please.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you to everybody, uh, for, for coming out. I will start with staff. I'm not sure who's answering. Oh, Samantha, there you are. How long has this property been vacant? It's gotta be since twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, at least?
Twenty eighteen.
Okay, so it's been vacant for a long time. We all knew something was going to happen. I know that, um, there was a lot of chatter about what, what it may or may not have. I know that, uh, because of the outreach that has been taking place, there's also been planning commission meetings, is that correct?
That's correct.
How many planning commission meetings have we had?
We've had one planning commission meeting.
Okay. And so, we've had the open house community outreach, we've had the planning commission, we have it tonight. I, I know for myself, I am a strong supporter of affordable housing. Uh, I understand this is our first affordable housing. Is there anywhere else that we will be having affordable housing in the future? Because the issue is the land. And we came into this land, it's really not even ours. It's the, um, and, and maybe you can help us kinda, so everybody understands, this is our first and only. There's no projections or no, there's no other possibilities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. How do we get this land to start with? And it's, it doesn't belong to the city, but if you can kinda share how this all came over the last seven years?
Uh, well, staff doesn't have too much history behind that, but again, it was a property that was, um, it was, uh, a property that the Alameda Corridor East Construction Authority acquired on behalf of the San Gabriel COG. So they are the regional agency that represents, uh, cities within the San Gabriel Valley. So this is, um, a, a public agency property, um, located in, in San Gabriel.
Okay. And so, the, the true owners right now, I believe, is the Regional Housing Trust.
Correct.
And so, they hired Related, and can't really even start with the funding opportunities until we get through this entitlement. Is that correct? We have to be shovel-ready for them to even be able to go out there and get money? Or maybe Related could share a little bit more about that?
Yes, but-
Why, why today is so important?
Right, specifically, but broadly speaking, when it comes to, um, grant funding, typically, a project has to be designed and defined, um, so that the grant amounts can be awarded. And sometimes there may be greater grant amounts, but depending on the project that is designed, sometimes the project would only get a portion of it or a percentage of it, because it's, it's, it's shared amongst other applications and other projects. So although funding may be available, um, sometimes the awardee doesn't get the full percentage amount. And that's for any grants that, that is out there, that the city or any agency makes an application for. As to what Related has specifically, um, been working on, they, they can speak to that. But just generally speaking, public funding is very competitive, um, also for the city. And typically, the level of competitiveness depends on how well-defined a project is. Otherwise, the granting agency will not know how much to, to really distribute.
But, but none of that can happen. I mean, the, the funding cycles are, I think, between March and July, March and July. And so, none of this could even start until we get through the entitlements. Because you may have a wonderful design, but it needs to be approved.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Vice Mayor, for your question, and very valid. So, yes, um, with affordable housing, how it works is, as, as, as Sam has stated, is that we compete against other projects and other applications. So starting from the building block and the foundation on the bottom, is to, first of all, obtain site control. So, uh, we partnered with the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust to be the affordable housing developers on this site, in part because we had gone through a selection process with the city of San Gabriel as the chosen developer for this site. Because the city was the one that, um, took a look at this opportunity, and we worked together in collaboration with the COG and the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust. So their contribution in the land as a ground lease to the project is the other stepping stone, one, the site control, two, the ground lease that helps with the financial commitment, and like what Sam says, is the entitlements. And you're right in that we cannot quite apply for a lot of these financing without having the entitlements, because it's about being competitive. These funding sources, the County, LA County Development Authority, the State HCD, they want shovel-ready projects, as you said. So, um, and, and these NOFAs, Notice of Funding Availability, usually only comes out once a year, maybe twice at best. As a matter of fact, uh, the State, uh, HCD, this year, they didn't even issue a, a NOFA because they have lack of funding. And so some years are even skipped. So it's imperative that we get our entitlements so that we can move along the process to start applying and build our building block. Because at the end of the day, the largest funding source that we do apply for is tax credits. And, um, until we get all of our financing ahead of the tax credits and the entitlements, essentially, it's really hard to be applying for our last source, which is the tax credits.
So if we do approve it tonight, and you start going through that process, what's the estimated date? I mean, how, how fast could you turn it around? Is this gonna be another five years, or is it gonna be two years, or one year?
Yes, that's a, that's a great question. Affordable housing takes a long time because, as I've mentioned, these NOFAs only come out typically once a year, and it's very, very competitive. And so if, uh, if you don't win the first round, then you have to wait until next year to apply. So, I'd like to hit the ground running and apply as much as we can. And we've started to apply where we can and when we can, and we will continue to do so. But there aren't any guarantees as to when we can secure, because again, it's very competitive. The one thing that can be done to help with the competitiveness, aside from obtaining our entitlements, is having as much of the building block, which is the, uh, local, uh, commitment. For example, the land from the trust and a little bit of dollars, um, money from the county, right? Or even the waiving of the impact fees, that all helps so that we're more competitive. So, if we have more local funding commitment, then our scoring will be a little bit better on a county level and on a state level. So, um, I'm sorry to say that I can't say the timing.
Excuse me, that's her, that her finish. Don't yell from the audience seat.
Yes.
No, she's answering my question. Please continue. So, so how, how long it will take?
Yeah, so typically, probably once entitlements, we try to do it within twelve to eighteen months if we could. we could. Sometimes it takes longer, but typically around that timeframe.
Okay. And then regarding services for our seniors, I'm happy AYC is here, obviously a very good partner. But the demographics that we talk about, I know I've seen on a variety of boards that I serve, that everything's kind of been reversed. We're not getting the high birth rates anymore. That's why the school districts are really seeking other ways of getting their ADAs. And I know that our senior population is really increasing. And so if you've done every, other projects like this, not everybody is as fortunate as we are to have an AYC. How have you addressed the services that are needed that are very specific for our seniors? Because you talked about a manager. Does this manager have a skill set for, to address seniors and their needs? Is there opportunities in these community rooms that you talked about that could bring in services also, aside from just AYC? How does that work?
That's a great question. So our property managers are highly trained. First of all, they're highly selected and then they go through a very rigorous interview process. They need to understand affordable housing and, in this case, they need to understand seniors. So if I may just go to, back to my presentation so I can show you the community rooms and community spaces that we are planning on as part of our amenities. And what I will say is we've partnered up, we've contemplated, partnered up with Life Steps, who is a social service provider. We will provide all of the services to our residents for free. And they may include health and wellness classes. They may include events and activities, especially social activities. So this is a zoomed-in building, a site plan. Towards the middle of the, towards the middle to the east, you see that there's an amenity space right there. Below, below the amenity space to the south, it's the lobby and leasing area. But that amenity space could be used as a community room and a community gathering space for the residents. And in the building B, there's also a community space, a couple of community spaces, including a tech room and a fitness room to encourage classes. And what Life Step has done is they've put together what they call chair yogas for seniors because they can't quite get on the floor. And so we do chair yogas. And we have a variety of social service activities that we provide to all of our residents for free.
Great. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And regarding the application process, my understanding is the city is not, is not responsible for the application process. That's all related. And can you kind of describe some of this? And at the end, we can talk about the income levels because I noticed on page 97, very clear what the income levels are. And I believe it also talks about how much these units would cost. But maybe we can start with the application process and if there's any restrictions. Can you share a little bit about that?
Right. So on this screen right now, I have the lease-up process. So let me take you along our process, which is about five to six months prior to construction completion, we will begin advertising and marketing. Typically, we advertise in, you know, locally, San Gabriel Tribune, we'll post around the library, markets and such to let the people know. And then four months prior to construction completion, we will distribute our leasing applications. We will have a website that people can go to and they can apply on the website, through the website, or they can ask for paper applications as well.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
When you say people, I mean, anyone? It doesn't, it's not restricted to just San Gabriel residents? It's anyone who qualifies?
Correct. So anybody can apply, right? And so what the next step would be is that if their application is complete and they have the proper income brackets, then they go through a lottery system. So just to let you know, we are also building in the city of Alhambra, neighboring city, that I'm building 44 units. Actually, it's 43 units because one unit is manager. So we've already opened up the application process and we've gotten 1,300 applications for the 43 units. So I anticipate, based on our open houses and the attendees, their number-one question is how soon can we move in? So I expect, I suspect that we will also go through an application process. So once we go through that application process, Related Management Company will income-qualify all of the applications, which means that the tenants cannot make, will have to be in the range between 30% and 80%, excuse me, 60% of area median income, based on LA County numbers. And what the, the area median income is a published income and rent level from the state. So something that we don't establish is what the state established as what is an affordable housing project. And so that's anywhere between 30 to 60% of area median income. So once Related Management goes through the income qualification period, the interview process, because we also do a very thorough review of all applicants, background check, make sure that they're okay to live there. Because we want to make sure that, you know, the residents, all residents are happy and safe. And that's how we then allow them to move in.
So then back to the income levels. So on page 97, it shows low, moderate, low and moderate. And then depending on the, on the unit, whether it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, studio. For example, for studios, low level, which is 60% of the median income, would qualify for the low.
It's a range between 30 to 60%. So it could be 30%, it could be 40%, 50% or 60% of area median income.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay. Because right here, it just says that.
Yes.
And then the next page on 98, page 98, it actually gives you the actual income levels, you know, from acutely low to moderate. And so based on some quick calculations, I mean, I came up with, the unit would be between $800 and $1,100. Is that accurate? Based on, I was just kind of looking, because I couldn't find the exact number. What's, okay, tell me what the rents are then.
Yes. It will be a range anywhere from 30% to 80, 60% of area median income. And if you give me a second, I can go get the chart. But in my memory right now, based on the LA County studios, it could be anywhere between roughly two, 300 bucks to probably around $1,100.
Okay. So this is the monthly rental?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I said 800, but I'll take your number. It's better for our seniors. Okay, 200 to 1,100. Okay.
Right. But I do want to establish that the way the rent is calculated, it's 30% of the, of the, of the annual income, right? So if, yeah. Of the applic-, well, no.
Sorry. Let her finish. Don't speak anymore. No, actually, if you do that one more time, I have to ask you to leave. Please continue.
Yes. So typically, the way the income or the rent is established by the state is that they calculated, they use a formula based on 30% of the area median income of their, of that income bracket. So that's how they calculate the monthly rent.
Okay. You know, it's not an exact size. It's just a range because I have heard some of these independent living facilities that are much larger and of course have many more amenities. I mean, they could range from $5,000 to, you know, $7,000 a month. So that's not what this is.
We are not, yeah. So this is an affordable housing project. So what that means is that we are definitely below market rate rents, for sure. And we will have a lot of regulatory agreements that will dictate what rents we can charge.
And you have your grants that you have to be in compliance with also. So it's not just, here's the money. You're going to have to keep providing that type of documentation to show that you are meeting what the grant requirements are.
Right. So there's a couple of things that we have, process that we have to follow. Again, we're very well-versed in the compliance. First of all, is during the application intake itself and the qualification. So all of this paperwork, the tax credit allocation committee and all of our funding sources have a right to monitor and come take a look at all of our files. And they do. And on an annual basis, they will also review our files. So not only do we have to make sure that the income qualify on the beginning side, but also all of the paperwork needs to be in place and properly in place for at least 55 years during monitoring period.
Okay. And so based on the fact that we're looking at 30 to 60% income, you know, I think there were some comments that kind of led me to believe that somehow this isn't a homeless shelter or this is, that is not the case. I mean, these are people who have a certain level of income.
Right. Correct. Yeah. Right. Thank you very much. Yeah. So this is not a homeless shelter. Homeless shelter implies being transient and transitional. This is a permanent affordable housing and a tenant has to make a certain amount of income in order to apply and qualify to live here.
But it's strictly rental. There's no, you can't buy the units. You have to rent the units.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I'd like to hear from my colleagues, but at this point, I think it's a great project and I think it can really bring a lot to our community. You know, unfortunately, this is the first and the only one we have for now, but I think it could be a real catalyst for the future. We do need to focus on our seniors. So I'm, you know, for now, I'm very comfortable approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer. And who's next? Councilman Ding?
The senior definition, how old is the senior they can apply?
That's a great question, Councilman. So it will depend on the funding source that we will be applying for, but it will be either 55 and better or 62 and better. It'll be one of the two.
So right now, you don't know that?
We have to apply for the financing, as Vice Mayor had pointed out.
Oh.
Yeah. But it will be definitely between either 55 or 62.
Okay. Yeah. If 55, 62, so based on your, the processing, it's how the community can know, community can know the five months, what's, what's the five months prior your construction complete, how the community can know that this kind of application? Because probably another thousand people to apply to, right?
That's a great question. So the fact that we are here today and opening this to the public for public comment and letting the public know that this is going on in our open houses, we've started to collect what we call an interest list. And that is why a dedicated Google Voice number and email has been established so that we can let these interested people know as we progress along. Hey, hey, we're starting construction. Hey, we're 12 months into construction. Alert, we are six months from completing construction. So that's one way that we will let people know. The second way, and I think this has been working very well for myself and our experience, is that we work very closely with the city's staff to let, to make sure that, you know, it's posted in the city's office, in the libraries, right? And on the city's website. We also do marketing efforts in local newspapers, such as the San Gabriel Tribune and other media outlets that the city would like to let us know, and other ones that we typically, we typically advertise in as well. In addition to that, when people pass the site, we typically have a very, very large construction sign. And that construction sign will also have a phone number that people can call and an email, and will have a website set up when the time is right so people can come and ask questions and get more information on.
So another question, that's for per applicant or the per family? It's each family, the husband, wife to apply, or just husband or wife, each person that can apply?
Either can apply. But we'll look at the income of both of them.
Okay.
Right? So if it's, if it's a husband and wife and they want to live together, then we will look at the income of both of them. But either of them can apply.
They can separate apply, even if they're married?
Well, if they apply separately, we're going to know that because they're going to have to say who they want to live with, right?
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to ask in more detail. You know why? Because the community, it's asking a lot of questions. So it's, I know the senior house, it's really high-demanding. Okay. So if just a husband, wife, so just one person, it's qualified, maybe 55 or 62, oh, they can apply. No matter if another spouse is younger, it's fine, too, right?
Oh, that's a great question. I'm going to have to look into that as to if the spouse is not of age, what happens? I think typically with the spouse, it should be okay. But if it's, let's say, a child, like a, like an adult child, that would not be okay because it has to be, you know, age-restricted. So I will look into that. That's a great question.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And Councilmember Chan, please.
Thank you for the presentation. I feel very comfortable. That seems like a good project. But addressing Councilman Ding, you know, maybe the husband or wife can apply if they don't want to live with their spouse. Yeah, no, yeah. Tell their spouse, get away from me. I want to live by myself over here. Just saying.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Ding. Yes. Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few questions and some might be for staff, some might be for the applicant. Rather than trying to do a calculation, is it possible to provide a chart of what the units will rent for, for information so that we can have solid numbers behind it? I think that would be helpful because I kind of came to similar calculations as Councilman Chaka, or Councilman Chaka, because the calculation is based on state law, so it's going to be a pretty solid figure. I was coming in the 7 to 1,100 range. I don't know where the 200 figure comes from. Unless you're doing .3 of .6, that might change it.
I was just trying to go off of memory. But you're right in that these rents and income limits are published annually by the Tax Credit Allocation Committee. As a matter of fact, you can Google it right now. If I had my phone, I would Google it for you right now. And it's published and updated annually. So even if I were to provide the number today, which I could, the numbers that will be, will be based on when we finish, complete the project. Let's say if it's 2027 or 2028, it will be based off of 2028 income and rent limits that the state governs.
Yeah. The reason I ask is because the median of the area is different than the income in San Gabriel. Because San Gabriel has two separate incomes for 91775, 91776. And they're, one's way above 98 and one's way below 98. So the zip code of the, of the project is 91776, which the median income is 77,000, not 98,000, which would hugely change your calculation if it's based on a percentage of 798.
Our calculation is based on county, Los Angeles County. So the income...
Not on our city, is my point.
Right. No. It's based on the county because that is what is established by the state. And because we will be applying for public funding, whether it's on a county level, a state level and tax credit, those all use the state limitations.
I understand. I'm just saying, we're doing this project in San Gabriel, we're not doing it in the county.
Councilman Harrington, may I jump in and just try to add a little bit to that?
Certainly.
I think where the confusion is, is as Jennifer states, we're bound by what the state produces for the income levels for each of the counties. We happen to be in LA County, so that's what we have to use. But the actual rent that the person will pay is based on their income. And it's 30% of their income, whatever that happens to be. So in order to apply or to qualify, they have to be under that 60% or 40% or 30%. But they're not charged based on that full 60% or 40% or 30%. So if somebody makes, you know, $800 a month, the most they can pay for their rent would be 30% of that $800. And that has to include utilities and other allowances. So that's where the numbers won't be a straight calculation. What we can provide is how that calculation is done for each tenant and how we arrive at those rents.
What's the minimum income qualification and how do you prove it? Is it taxed, based on your tax return?
It is. And they have, as Jennifer stated, Related has been doing this forever. And all of their funding sources audit those files to make sure. To my knowledge, there is not a minimum. They have to, they have to be in the system. They have to have a social security number and be filing taxes or if they're under the tax filing limit, they have to... taxes, or if they're under the tax filing limit, they have to... That's allowed as well. But, for example, if all they have is social security, that's what they will be charged their rent based on.
Gotcha. So, we got the senior definition. We had a question from, and this came from the commission as well, about other tenants, so like adult children that are not seniors. How do we police that? How do we prevent someone coming in and then letting their kids live there that are adults that are way under senior age?
The reason why we've been successful in affordable housing, I believe, is because we have an onsite, full-time onsite property manager that lives there. Now, they have, you know, working office hours, where tenants can come talk to them and such, between the hours of 8:00 to 5:00, but you find out pretty quickly, you know, somebody coming in and out that shouldn't be coming in and out.
But my point, though, is, what is the process if someone continues to just blow that off and say, "Sorry, that's who's living with me"? Do you evict? I mean, how does that work?
We do have an eviction process, and we do have a process, going back to working very closely with our social service provider, because it's a team effort here, and we understand that seniors have, you know, sometimes they have extra needs that we need to communicate. And so, we work together as a team to start the eviction process, if that is the case. It's a highly regulated project, because of all the public funding that is involved, and so if anybody is going to not abide by the house rules that is set, we do have an eviction process, yes, including non...
I just want to make sure that's something, because that would be a concern of the neighbors, if we start to get people there that are not following the rules of the development. And, you know, obviously, the city has some liability there, because we are a partner in this, we are the leaseholder. So, you know, and if we're causing a nuisance, that's obviously, that's not where the position the city wants to be in. So, we need an active management that's protecting everybody, the residents as well as the neighbors. I had a question for, this might be for a city attorney. Section 9B of the covenant, that's on page 88 of the report, says that the designated units shall not be changed without prior written consent of the director, which I believe would be our community development director. I'd like to see if we can change that to the city council. I think this decision rises to a city council level. If units are gonna get changed in designation from low or moderate or whatever, we're approving that tonight, and I think it should come back to us for approval, not the director. It can be consent, it can be notice, but I just think that's something that the city council should be involved in, and that way, it prevents rents from getting changed quickly or without our knowledge, because right now, we're approving a project, and it's allowing staff to do it. So, section 9B of the covenant.
Is it page 88?
It's 88 on the electronic.
I can't think of any legal reason why that couldn't be... That change couldn't be made.
Gotcha.
There may be practical reasons.
Well, I mean, I just... It might be practical, but I think something like this does rise to the level of the council should know, because the second that those things change, we're gonna start getting complaints, and either from people that don't want the rents increased, or don't want them changed. The council should have some say in that, not just staff. That's my opinion. I'll leave it up to the rest of the council to decide that. If that's legal to do that, that's how I'd prefer that goes, but we'll see. And then regarding, section 20 regarding indemnity, it says we have... My concern here is really, it's about the active negligence, which basically is a straight negligent standard. I'd really like to see gross negligence on the side, so basically, we are indemnified unless we are negligent. I'd like that bar to be raised up a little bit. I'd like to see some gross negligence, because it's very easy, under a contract negligence, to be negligent. I'm not talking about tort. So, basically, if we make any decision or take active participation in anything, and it's on us, then we don't get indemnification, which I think, if we're the leaseholder, we should, and we're negotiating a contract, we should get the value of our leverage right now and get that standard set up to gross negligence. It's impossible.
Again, there's no legal reason why we couldn't ask for that change.
Thank you. And that's just something for the council to consider, whether to... So, just... So, negligent standard is something that... So, indemnification means if something goes wrong and we were involved with it, there's a potential that the city could be liable. Indemnity means that the manager will cover all the costs. That includes lawyer's fees, cost of any settlement, anything. If we participated in whichever decision that results in that, that means that we may not be indemnified, and the city's on the hook. What I want to say is, if we're gonna have any hook, it should be not just standard negligence, I think it should be a little higher standard for us, because the difference between arguing negligence is very easy to convince a jury someone was negligent. Gross negligence is almost you intended to do it. I mean, it's just below intent. It's like willful disregard. Like, you were just like, "Yeah, whatever, we'll just do it anyway." That's kind of the layman's standard. Negligence is very... It's a kind of a low bar. It's like, you knew something could have happened. Like, okay, we made a decision, we knew something could have happened. And I like going strict legal case law, I'm saying it's kind of... I'm more comfortable with a higher standard of actions of us or our staff. That's my opinion. I think it's gross negligence, it's just adding one word, actively negligent, grossly And then regarding, we had a question from residents regarding the kind of like, I would kind of like the safety issue of the back wall, and that also concerns noise. And, you know, I've kind of been down in the area when trains go by. It's not super loud compared to, you know, obviously, at Great, because it is 30 feet down. What type of mitigation have you guys looked into that, as far as both the security of the perimeter, as well as the noise, vibration, dust, all that good stuff?
That's a great question, Councilman. Thank you very much. Let me start off by addressing the noise/vibration concern question. I like to start by saying that, related over the past couple of years, five to maybe seven years, have built probably close to 10 developments adjacent to train tracks, whether it be in Ontario or the city of Santa Ana, we've done a number of them, where it's just adjacent to it. And we found that putting a lot of thought in the design really does help. And so, what we've done is, we've mitigated by having great, properly rated windows, the... Even the positioning of the buildings, or the assembly walls, as well as the roof, that all helps. As part of our due diligence, we had commissioned exterior noise and exterior facade acoustic analysis. We understand that the train track is right north of us, and we were also concerned about the vibration and noise from the rail, and so we wanted to measure and analyze whether the vibration and noise would be in compliance with the Federal Transit Administration. So, I think we need to break it down into two bite-sized pieces. The first one, let's start off with the vibration. According to the Federal Transit Administration, residences and buildings where people normally sleep, the vibration level should not exceed 80 vibration decibels. And so, we had, we commissioned a study, we had probes put at different locations of the site, especially where the buildings are contemplated to be. Now, I'm not here to say that there aren't going to be any vibration or noise for that fact. The question to ask is, does it rise above threshold, right, where we would have a concern over? And based on the study, it was found that none of the trains would exceed a recommended criterion of 80 vibration decibels, and therefore, what we are currently designed as works as is. So, that's the vibration. Now, the noise. According to the State of California Building Code and the City of San Gabriel Municipal Code, it states that the interior community noise equivalent level for residential land uses are not to exceed 45 decibels in any habitable room. And so, based on these probes and studies that we've done, we found that the decibel level, interior decibel level, falls under the 45 decibels. One of the buildings around 42 and 44. So, again, I'm not here to say that there's not going to be any noise, but the question is whether it is above threshold. And what we found is that it is not above threshold based on the current design. And so, what the report also states is that our current exterior wall assembly and the roof assembly is enough to help mitigate, including the STC-rated walls. I had mentioned earlier that we have to give careful design, and that is why the northern side of the project that faces the train tracks don't have any decks or balconies, because when you have the proper wall assembly and proper STC-rated windows, that helps mitigate the noise that would enter in. So, we've thought very deeply about how to best design the project. And of course, as you mentioned, it really helps that the train tracks are, you know, subsurface as opposed to surface level, and the walls of the subsurface level act as a natural sound wall.
Thank you. And regarding the perimeter security, like...
Oh, yes, sorry. So, yeah, so we will... We, first of all, we care about the safety of our residents. We've been in business for over 30 years, and we've maintained ownership of almost all of our projects, and so the safety of our residents is also a primary concern for us. And so, we plan on having fencing perimeters, and because of today, I will take note of that, and we will study it further to make sure that the fencing that we are contemplated is appropriate, and we will work with the proper agencies to make sure that the fencing is appropriate as well. But in addition to that, I think it's really important that we work very closely with our social service provider, because somebody had mentioned, I think it was maybe Vice Mayor that, or maybe the public, mentioned that seniors, you know, as they age, they might have some mental issues, and so we work, we will work with our social service provider to keep track of any of our seniors as they age, and make sure that they are safe and secure. We also have security cameras to oversee, live feed, and so we'll make sure that everybody's safe.
Thank you. And this might be from Mark, or possibly city attorney. I saw the affordable covenants are for 55 years. How long is the ground lease? I couldn't see a term, like the term. I was looking for, how long is this agreement in place for? And then, what happens when it winds down? Who ends up owning the property?
I would actually leave that to Jennifer, because her agreement is with the cog, not with the city, but in my experience of projects that have come up on that 55 years, a lot of them try to renew at that point, and at 55 years, most of these projects need refurbishment, so they approach the city and the county about doing what we call TFR hearings, to try to gain more tax credit money to renew those buildings, but the owner does have the right, at the end of the 55 years, to turn that into a market rate unit, if they so desire, if they've had the property for that long. So, there's no guarantee that it would remain affordable after 55 years, unless there is a separate agreement with the San Gabriel Valley Cog or the Regional Housing Trust for that 99-year ground lease, and they may have some covenants over and above what the tax credits or any of their funding sources would require.
So, the answer is 55 years, and it goes back to the developer?
It potentially could, unless they have further restrictions from the property owner, which is the housing trust.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I could help address that, if you like. The covenant that we have with the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust will be a 90-year... 99-year covenant. That's a very long time. And typically, what happens in affordable housing, just to let you know, is after about 15 years, there's a lot of wear and tear on the buildings, and we want to make sure that, you know, it comes up to a good standard. And so, typically, what affordable housing developers do is they do what we call a resindication to get new tax credits and bonds in order to refresh the buildings, put in new, you know, because efficiency standards change over 15 years, you know, accessibility laws change over the, you know, 15 years. And so, typically, what happens is, then you start fresh with a new 55-year covenant. So, you start from year one, and year 15, we resindicate and start the clock all over. So, that's...
All right. That's it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before I start, I got a request for the house break, so let's take 10 minutes break, and let's continue. Thank you. Samantha, I have some questions for our city staff. Thank you, Samantha. Regarding the report, according to the history outlined in the report, the Public Works Department explored vacating 10 to 12 feet of land to bring the site closer to the street for development feasibility. So does the 70,307 square feet that is already included in the 12 to, like 10 to 12 feet's lands being vacated?
That's correct. The seven feet dedication plus the length that it runs equates to approximately 11,000 square feet of that 70,000.
So how so how wide would the street be after the, you know, proposed vacation?
The current width is 80.
Say it again?
The current width is 80. So it would be a reduction of that seven.
Okay.
Uh, 12, excuse me, 12.
12? Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me go back.
Take your time.
Yeah, let me get that right. Open space, 12 feet dedication.
So 12 feet, again, I mean, so the street, after proposed vacation, there'll be still 12 feet or?
No, it's the dedication is 12 feet in in the depth. And so it would be a reduction from that 80.
From 80, right? Okay. And how how would that affect the traffic in public access?
How would it affect traffic in public access? It would still be accessible. For comparison, the width of the width of Rosenda and Madera are 60 feet wide. So that gives you some comparison between existing widths along the residential street versus Main Street. So the the access would be similar. It doesn't reduce any of the access. Right now, if you do travel along Main Street, it is a wide street. So that reduction, it would still accommodate for a similar flow of traffic.
Okay. And the report emphasized that affordable housing projects are primarily financed through low-income housing tax credit. So estimated impact fee for this project is 688,620. Are we waiving the full amount of this impact fee for this project? Or there is some form of subsidies or reimbursement through the Tax Credit Allocation Committee that offset the cost?
So the number that you see right here is based off of the current calculation. Every year, it adjusts based on the CIP. That is Public Works formula. This is the exact number that is presented at this point in time. When the project submits for building plan check, and it may be in one year, it may be in two years, that number may be different based on whatever the value is at that time. The ask from the developer is this ask, whether or not the city council grants it. That's a part of the discretionary decision this evening.
I'm sorry, just to make that clear. So when we make decision today, are we also?
It's it's a part of the council's decision, yes.
It's part of our decision. Okay, okay, good. In the property, the property tax revenue, it's it's this is a very significant portion of the city's income. So for this affordable housing project, would the city be able to collect the same level of proportion of property tax as with the other properties? Yes, Mark?
The short answer is no. Anytime that you build an affordable housing project, it does come off the tax roll. So similar to churches and other nonprofit organizations in the city, they don't pay taxes.
Okay, so there is no property tax revenue out of this project? Okay. Then, and I noted this project exempt from the requirements of SEQA. So public comments raised concern today regarding potential toxic substances underground. So while SEQA is waived, the report mentioned that technique, technical studies, including a Phase One, Phase Two environment report, an assessment, and have been submitted for review by Department of Toxic Substance Control. If this study uncovers significant issues that indicating that land may not be suitable for development, will us, the city, have the authority to help the project? Or does the SEQA exemptions bind us to proceed regardless of the findings?
Well, to start, the property, you can develop a project on the property. So if the this particular, this specific project is not approved this evening, that site can still have a development and a project on the site. As to additional requirements, it being a residential development by involving DTSD is just another reviewing agency. The Phase One, Phase Two has done their analysis. Now as far as what the system is to address what's been identified in the Phase One and Phase Two, that's being monitored and reviewed by DTSD. So similar to, for example, if the city approves the CUP for alcohol use, then it goes to the state, the ABC, and they issue the license. In this case, an analysis has been been done. And now it's under the review of another reviewing agency. What their comments have shown is that a system can be can be built into the the project so that the project can be constructed. As far as the details of that, what that will look like, it also depends on how the project will be constructed. So that is why that is something that is defined at that level. It's been captured as one of Public Works's condition of approval, where whatever that approved system is, it should be reflected within the construction drawing. So that that is something that the city will also be monitoring as part of the construction drawing review.
So we are able to monitor that?
Correct.
So since the SEQA is waived, are we going to perform EIR?
No. So what that waiver does and what that Assembly Bill states is that typically the environmental review process is what adds to the costs and the timing for reviewing housing projects, and specifically for affordable housing projects. And so what that is built into, there's still some criteria that the project has to meet, that certain analysis have to be done. But unlike a project that is subject to SEQA, where there are specific environmental factors that have to be analyzed and whether or not thresholds within those environmental factors, they exceed certain thresholds, which is why when you get into that, you'll hear things such as significant impacts or less than significant impacts, where there may be an impact based on the project. And if it's significant, then there's certain things that the city can condition or build into the project. Or otherwise, if not, similar to the cemetery project that came before the city council, where sometimes the city has to say, we recognize that there are impacts from this project, but the value of the project itself overrides the impacts of the project. So just depending on the significance, so even though a project may have some impact, whether or not it exceeds certain thresholds, that's what the SEQA process typically analyze. In this case, the state has built into housing laws where as certain, as long as certain thresholds are, do not exceed and as long as certain agencies are consulted. For example, the tribal consultation, that's still a requirement. So there are specifications. It's just not communicated and documented in a way that is standard to a SEQA analysis that the the commission and the city council would see in an initial study or in a mitigated deck. Those are the typical document. But that isn't to say that analyses are being bypassed. It's just, it's not packaged within that type of document.
So for the environment, environmental assessment, is that both Phase One and Phase Two are required? Or Phase Two will be only as needed, then we will perform this?
The Assembly Bill only addresses a Phase One. And ultimately, if a Phase One leads to a Phase Two, then that's what has to be prepared. But the the Assembly Bill itself does not specifically state that a Phase One and a Phase Two are requirements. It's just whatever is the result from the Phase One.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for this. So any other questions from my colleagues? Everything's okay? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Just a really quick question. Is Jennifer still here? Oh, I'll just ask the question. So if we do approve it, what kind of ongoing outreach do you do with the community? Because I'm assuming it's not just going to end. I mean, there's clearly questions and concerns, but I'm sure you're very capable of addressing them. But is there going to be ongoing communications, just an outreach?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you very much. And the answer is yes. We like to continue our community outreach efforts. That is why we have an interest list so that people can come ask us questions as well. It's an open communication. We have a phone line that they can come ask questions. And I think a lot of times, just personally answering questions is one of the best best things that we can do because everybody has different concerns instead of an open forum. So yes, we do plan on doing more community outreach.
So when you have these community forums, are there any city staff? So when you have these community forums, are there any city staff there, or is it strictly related?
Uh well, city staff was present, yes. Yes, so Aldo Sarantas, the director, was present, and we had it in this.
Because one of the biggest questions, it seemed to be, well, there's there were lots, but in particular parking. So I think it's important for staff to be there, maybe our um traffic enforcement could be there at the next meeting um to at least hear the concerns and see if there's any kind of mitigation or remedies that can be brought forward, so so thank you.
Will do, thank you.
May, one quick question, real quick. Um so you mentioned that informational phone number for concerns, and when you call that number, does a real life person answer?
Well, that's a great question. Um it's been a little bit difficult with the amount of um requests and interests that we've gotten. Um so the beauty of Google Voice Number is that it transcribes the voicemail, so that we can distill what they are. But more importantly, we do that because sometimes it's in multiple lang-, you know, different language. And so we can have the proper um language be called back.
Okay, so it it there's not necessarily a live person who answers, but it gets transcribed and routed to someone who can answer that question and then get back to the the homeowner or resident?
Right, it gets routed to me.
Okay, good luck.
Yes, thank you, thank you, and then I disseminate it accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Yeah, so it's like the mayor was asking the question for the fee waiver. So it looks like we don't have the property tax and the impact fee waiver. So the question is, is this state will be have give to a city to encourage us, the city have the affordable housing? I think a state should be have the financial grant to help us, because we for us, it's increased our police, fire, the public work burden too. Yeah, that's that's my question, is it is this state have this kind of grant or whatever possible to help our city?
Oh, uh that's a great question. Um so earlier we had talked about the different building blocks of affordable housing financing, right? And part of the city's uh contribution is the impact fees, right? And that helps so that we can be more competitive for the next application with the county and with the state. Uh so that.
No, the state never helps us.
Current no, but uh current no, yeah, I know. The current no, but I wish our council member maybe should be bring the some voice like uh in the uh the ICA or or Legos.
It's all yours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can be the one.
Yeah, we we should be have the voice.
Well, we'll go complain about it tomorrow.
Well, I mean, if we are more competitive on a local, we can compete better on the state, right? So your contribution will help the state fund the project.
Okay, all right, and that's it, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we have any further discussion? No question, no further discussion, so yes, Councilmember Harrington.
I'm ready to make a motion. There's no further discussion?
I second.
Oh no, I said.
Oh, no, 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 no.
You don't know when I'm moving. Man, you really, you do have confidence, I think. Um I would like to uh mo- motion to approve the general plan amendment zone change, density bonus, street vacation with two modifications to the agreement, which is um change in the rent schedules or the dedic- the uh like I mentioned is nine B should go through the city council rather than the owner's director. That's one modification. The other modification was the indemnity standard should be higher, which would be going from active negligence to gross negligence. And then further waive reading uh and introduce by title only and further reading.
So it's page eighty.
That's the mayor to it.
Uh just for clarity, I don't think that that would require a new first reading, because it's a change of the agreement, not the project. But I just wanna confirm that, so just be aware that we it might come back as a first read again.
But that would just be a reading, it wouldn't be a whole new hearing, correct?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Perfect lawyer answer. That's why we pay the big bucks.
I'll second that.
Okay, so now we have motion uh has been made by Councilmember Harrington and uh second by Vice Mayor Manchaca, please vote.
Motion passed by a vote of five zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
The next item scheduled on the agenda was continued business item A, consideration of a professional services agreement with Farm Habits. Though this item will be rescheduled at a future time, please note that council received a written comment in support from resident Erlinda Romo and a written comment in opposition from Sonia Lin. Our next item is new business item A, consideration and discussion on establishing a sister city between the city of San Gabriel and Hualein County, Taiwan, Republic of China. City manager Lazaretto will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll keep my comments very brief and turn it over to Mayor Wu, as this was an item that was brought forward at his request. But the council will recall that in uh January of this year, January twenty twenty-four, we created a policy or adopted a policy that governs how we deal with new sister city and friendship city relationships for the city. Uh shortly after that, we um formed our first recent partnership with the uh District of Ban Chao, and that is uh our first sister city designation in over a decade. Uh Mayor Wu traveled to Taiwan and visited Ban Chao shortly after that in July. And as part of that trip, he visited uh Walian County, several other places, but one of the places was Walian County. You'll all remember that Walian County has a relationship with Temple City already, and they come and dance in the Camellia Festival and have had that relationship for the past three or four years. And um they are very active, and they come out and visit Temple City every year. So uh after that um visit by Mayor Wu, the magistrate and staff from Walian County approached Mayor Wu and asked if we could form another sister city relationship. And that's what before you tonight, uh the policy that we have does not say we cannot have two sister cities in one um uh country. There's no limit on the number, um it would totally be up to the city council to decide. And with that, I would turn it over to Mayor Wu to um add to that presentation.
Well, thank you very much, Mark, and first of all, I would like to say thanks to Mark and Eliana for preparing this report, and also thank you, my colleagues, that doing supporting the friendship with Ban Chao in New Taipei City. The Hualein County, that is a place where we have a population three hundred twenty thousand people, that is Taiwan's largest county. And in two thousand eighteen, I was a community leader at that time, uh that I had the privilege to of helping establish the friendship between Temple City and Hualein County. And since they signed the agreement, they have stay in regular contact and part- participate in a Camellia uh parade several times. Both sides have a fostered and closer and stronger relationship through meaningful interactions. Uh as uh Mark mentioned, the magistrate, uh Xu Zhengwei and her husband, actually, uh Mr. Fu Fu Kunqi is also a congressman in Taiwan, and they have been my friends for many years. But magistrate Su visited our city this February with her delegation and was very impressed with what she saw. In Hualein County, they, this is a home uh to sixteen indigenous tribes, and most this is also the most any county in Taiwan. And magistrate was particularly impressed with our city's history, and in the past, uh some of these tribes in Hualein, they uh they sent the children to perform dances and songs at our mission playhouse. And during my recent trips to Taiwan, I had chance to meet magistrate Su again. That one things I learned from my visit to Hualein County is that I might not be a good best dancer, but I still danced for two hours straight. Then in Hualein, that is how they make friends. Well, uh I something I would like to make a report, Mark, that magistrate was re-elected two years ago in twenty twenty-two. That was the highest support rate among all politicians in Taiwan at sixty-four percent. She personally request that we formalized a sister city. Person personally, you know, um in between the San Gabriel and uh Hualein County, and provide a draft um agreements to our city manager's office. They aim to make this relationship official, submitting the agreement through Taiwan Central Government for full registration. Where Hualein delegation had a wonderful time during their visit to our city and meeting most of my colleagues, although that we missed the most handsome one, Mr. Harrington. You missed that, but uh they had excellent discussion um with RPD and FIRE, exchanging valuable ideas for making community uh community safer and stronger. Um many of you may not know that even they have, their fire their fire department has like five hundred firefighters and twelve hundred uh volunteer firefighters. And I hope that I can count on you, my colleagues, to support and to approve this meaningful relationship with Hualein County, Taiwan, the Republic of China, to our city that this is available, uh this is a value to begin uh with a coordination by Ms. Chinachi, the board member of San Gabriel School Unified District. The the student dancer from Hualein High School have already met our students at Gabalino High School, and they have an impressive culture preservation program that maintains Hualein County diversity. They also inter- they also they are also internationally connected and collaborating with and well, uh they're collaborating with indigenous group around the world. Uh they plan to visit us again, so bring uh special design lanterns, they just for city of San Gabriel. So one more thing, Eliana is very familiar with Hualein County and has no issues communicating with them serving the uh in Temple City. So when I told magistrate Su that we now have new assistant to the city manager, that name Eliana Flores, she recognized the name and was surprised that someone so familiar with Hualein County's sister city relationship is now working with us. So my apology to Temple City now, because Eliana is ours now. So that's conclude my report, and uh I will like, I'm open to any question. So do we have any uh public comments?
I have no speaker cards.
No speaker cards, okay. Now, now for our um council discussion. Debbie? No. Okay, so now for Councilmember's discussion.
Wrong buttons, okay, here we go. So on this one, I I I actually, I mean, I I was part of um the engagement with Hualein County and part of the magistrate, and um and and I agree that they would be wonderful partners. I I guess I I'd just love to hear from my colleagues regarding the fact that we already have a sister city in Taiwan, and to have another one, it just seems that the program is about, you know, having relationships with with a variety of countries or yeah, a variety of countries, and so I feel like it's getting very concentrated in this particular country. And so it it's it's not, it's not a reflection on on the on the magistrate or or the county, but I just feel like we need to be um have a broader um base, and and when we talk about sister cities, uh we should try to um go beyond those boundaries. But um, you know, I'd just like to hear from others, that's all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and yes, Councilmember Chen.
Um I I, excuse me, I think I would tend to disagree with my colleague Vice Mayor Manchaca, because to me, I don't think it should be about a quota per se, one per country or something. To me, these kind of relationships are about people and the relationship between people, and that two different municipalities or wherever they happen to be are willing to cooperate with each other. And and it seems like, uh from what I've seen, when the Hualein uh delegation came, that they were very impressive, and they were impressed with us. And um and so it's it seems to me that we could both, you know, both uh both cities or county and us uh would benefit from just a more personal relationship. And again, to me, it's about the relationship, not about what part of which country and and so and and seeing as they would be willing to, they seem willing to partner with us and we with them, then that's the important part to me, but that so that's kind of where I am. And and even though uh with, I guess, we have a certain, well, a guided guidance policy as to an organization, it says that we like to have an organization that i- is um based here, that 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 is has a a direct connection with that, with the other municipality. Uh it seems like even without that formal organization, there seems to be the willingness and uh of both parties with both municipalities to partner, and I think that should be enough, but that's uh that's my opinion. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Chen, yes. Any? Yes, Councilmember Harrington? Oh, you're okay, and Councilmember Ding?
Yeah, so yeah, uh some relationship like uh some, yeah, we if we were concerned, if we, I just question that we adopt the resolutions have limit for the for the each coun- uh country? You have, we have a limit, we don't have a limit, right? So if we have limits, so maybe we can think about it, right? If we don't have limit, like uh it's a relationship, it's very important. Also, looks like uh uh the the mayor of Hualein and and our mayor, it's really have the ch- uh help the both city and uh have the good relationship. And then uh and then we also have the experience, they Hualein, they come visit to us, and they bring the allowed the the especially for the Taiwan, ni- actually native cultural, they bring the to like a pe- that's especially for the student. They are dancing, it's really, hm, actually, they are repen- it's, I know that this county in the Taiwan, it's more like uh indigenous people to living over there and have the, it's really historical, the culture. So it's 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 really, for me, it's our city, city of San Gabriel or city with the mission. So it's it's really good for the cultural exchange, you know? And uh and and the both mayor is proactive to communicate each other. Yeah, in cooler, I think uh they also willing to help us our Latin festival for the Latin, so why not? And 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 for our whole, our city, the resident, right? If we already have our the like uh two hotel, may future have a three hotel, I think so we we also, council member also wanted to, if because they bring the tax, that, right? So help us, we can pay ministry, can help our our public safety, PD and the FIRE. So we should be do the, if we have this chance to do this sister city or to help us like uh also like uh uh publicity to the Taiwan, especially the the Hualein. If they coming here, so I we also, yeah, they come to the Los Angeles slash San Gabriel, right? So help us, so uh if if you, I think if you have the this kind of relationship, yes, really help our city have the more revenue, it's more active for the for the tourists. But tourists also help our city. We want our historic city, not just our neighborhood city to know that, but we we want to like uh the war can know that. I I I just say that the uh our mayor, it's grow up in the Taiwan. I'm, when I become the mayor, I'm from Shanghai. Actually, the city of San Gabriel in Shanghai is a famous city in the most people just know the Los Angeles, they don't know the city of San know the Los Angeles, they don't know the city of St. Gabriel. After, yeah, so it's, it's opportunity to like tourists, especially like foreign tourists to come to our city to make our city more beauty and more tax revenue to help us. Yeah, I, I really like, I listen the rest of our county, but for my personal, it's really support that. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Ding. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one more quick comment? Just to my observation that, you know, this, to me, it doesn't seem like we're making, you know, this kind of relationship formality just for random or capricious purposes, just to say that we have a sister city somewhere. I have, I feel that both sides, both municipalities are willing, they seem like they're really willing to have follow through. And as you said, they already come out here for, for their relationship with Temple City every year. So it's not like they're just gonna take the name and then disappear. They actually follow through, they come, come every year and then, you know, maybe one of these days we can go over there. And so it seems like it's going to, both sides are willing to have a real relationship, not just for, just to be on paper. So again, I, I support, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, okay, so I, I just, yes, yes, Councilmember.
All right, I just, for the, looks like this Hualien city, the Bancho, I don't know the, is this city right now have any, like every year consistent to like have the, like talk to the our sister city, the relationship with their city? Now, if, if every year we've, we have the like some staff to really like initiate these kind of relationships? So I, I, we, I like agree the Eric, the Councilmember Chen, we want to like a consistent, if we have to establish this kind of relationship, we should be like do like every annually or maybe two year or three year?
But they do, that's what we're saying. They, they are annual because they come out for Temple City every year. So then, so since they're coming out every year for them, then that means they'll come out for us. So, so it will be consistent. So I'm.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you very much. And first of all, I think that we, we should not really limit ourselves from making friends, especially when friends shaking hands with us and say, you know what, let me make some other friends. I mean, I mean, first of all, I, we have already create the relationship with Hualien County that they visited us. I think they have spoke to us. We, we, we had a really good feeling about this. And second, I think Hualien County, they have sixteen or up, what is it called, indigenous tribes? And I, when I introduced our city to their fifty thousand people that in their harvest festival, I told them that we also have our tribes in the city. So that will be a good start that for our indigenous tribes and groups that can start a negotiation, not negotiation, I'm sorry, communication and bridge a friendship between them. They have invited not only the, you know, the, the local tribe, they also invite the tribes in Hawaii. So this year, they have invited Hawaii high school students dance there and also from New Zealand, they have indigenous group that dance in Hualien as well. So this is, they have a constant, constantly to expand their relationship and connect to the world. And I'm so glad that they are willing to make the City of St. Gabriel as the next one. Also, when they come here, I did mention to them, please stay in our city. So they did. And several times. And I'm happy that they always stay in either Hilton or Sheridan, but they always stay in City of St. Gabriel. So we keep the tax revenue for, for us, for our own. The last thing is I would say St. Gabriel is a great city that worth for us to make friends that able to become our showcase, that telling, you know, the Asian regions that this is a place where we have a relationship with. I, I will be really actively to see those, those delegates that from Hualien will come to see, visit us. And also we will be paying visit when we have a chance. And I agree with Vice Mayor Manchaca because I know that you travel a lot to Europe, to Egypt, so many places. And I hope that you also can start with, you know, some kind of like official relationship we can make friends with and we can find the common value that we have with other friends. But I think Hualien County is a great candidate. Believe it or not, I have visited seven city within twenty days. Even that is all my own expenses, but to me is so grateful that I had a great experience talking to them. And not only Hualien County is making that proposal, but I think Hualien County will be the most feasible at this moment because we had already create our friendship, not only here, but also over there. So that's my conclusion. Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, a comment that was made by Councilmember Chen. It is true that Temple City, it's a city, not an organization, like our policy says, you know, we, we do try, but I think they've proven themselves as a viable sister with Temple City. And if they also want to do it with us, and I, I look at Temple City kind of like that organization, that glue that we ask for in our policy. So I, I'm comfortable continuing on knowing that with Temple City, we're kind of like sharing the sister now. And, but they're willing to take the time. I don't think Temple City has any hotels anyway, so we're not competing there. But anyway, so I, so I am comfortable with this relationship. So thank you for, for sharing all your thoughts.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Chen.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, I'd like to make the motion to establish the sister city program with Hualien County, Taiwan, Republic of China.
Thank you.
To promote cultural diversity. So I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion. Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Chen and second by Councilmember Ding. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you very much. And next item, please.
Police Department Update 2024. Police Chief Elizalde will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Manchaca, Councilmember Harrington, Ding, Chan, Mr. Lozaretto. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you to give you an overview and an update as to the police department. But before I did, I just wanted to give some thanks. On September fifth, a few weeks ago, I celebrated and completed my first year serving as the chief of police for the St. Gabriel Police Department. So to the council and to Mr. Lozaretto, thank you each very much for affording me this opportunity. To the community members, that, community members and business owners who I've met over the past year, they have been very welcoming, so thank you. To my partners on the executive team, they're out there in the back. Thank you all for being so supportive and welcoming and helping me through the transition. And a really big thanks to the men and women of the organization. As you see them here tonight, I had only asked a few to come. But as you can see, the true support that I felt over the years, so thank you all. They all have families that they can be home with, but they chose to be here. So again, I am truly thankful for this opportunity. So tonight I'd wanted to start with giving you an overview of the organization. When I came on on September fifth, the department was coming off a transition period of around nine months where one of our captains, Captain Ricky Nakamura, was serving as the interim chief. And he is here tonight and I really want to thank him for his due diligence, stepping up to that responsibility. I know it was not easy. I know it was not challenging or that it was challenging and that even though it was only nine months, it probably aged him around three to five years. So thank you for that, Ricky. I appreciate it very much. I found that the, the men and women of the organization were welcoming and worked diligently to get me up to speed, learning the culture and everything that was St. Gabriel PD and that is St. Gabriel PD. On my first day, literally within my first hours of getting into my office, I saw the family atmosphere that I had heard about when a beloved employee was diagnosed with a medical condition. I saw the staff jump into action and the love and genuine support that I saw that morning has just been continuing. Our officers, our professional staff, our volunteers, they are always there for one another and to the community and to the council, you should feel very comfortable in their genuine feelings for wanting to help one another, but more so the community. Also, what was surprising in a very nice way and a very positive way is the relationships that I saw firsthand with our police department and the community and our community members knowing our officers and vice versa by first name and the long lasting relationships that had been fostered. When I came on, the organization was operational. In my assessment over the first year, I saw that it needed some tweaking to get us back onto the right path and moving upward and forward to make St. Gabriel PD a premier agency. Early on, I met with the different teams, the bureaus and the sections, and later on with individual employees and asked them in those conversations what they liked about the organization, what they didn't like about the organization, and if there was one thing that they could change, what would that be? And there were some reoccurring themes throughout those conversations and what you see up there are the main three that employees brought to my attention. One, communication, equipment and efficiency. I found that on some levels, communication was lacking. It was delayed. And in, in some parts, even though well intended, the messaging was off, which was causing some trouble amongst the staff in trying to understand what the directive was. With the equipment, a quick analysis and speaking to our staff, I found out that we were operating, our patrol officers were operating with some outdated equipment, the patrol rifles, essential equipment such as our ballistic helmets and our gas mask. And then to efficiency, asking our staff questions as to why we did certain things. And common response was is that we've always done it that way and/or no one's ever changed it. This truly didn't fall on the shoulders of the staff. It also had to do with some of the technology that was in play when I came on and is still in play and that we're looking to change. It just wasn't conducive to the work load that my team does every day and it hampers our abilities. In a nutshell, we were in an analog world when we should have been in a digital atmosphere. But again, the communication, the equipment and the efficiency, those have been priorities for me and trying to better each of those and working with our staff with regards to efficiency, also looking at collaboration with the Police Officers Association and the Police Management Group and bringing them on first when we're looking at making policy change or practice change rather than put something out from the, traditionally from the top down and then running into issues and having to go back to the drawing board to try and fix it. I have been welcoming both groups and collaborating with them early on to let them know that there is change coming and, and affording them an opportunity for their input. Moving on to some of the projects that we currently have underway and into the next several months. Mayor, I know you've been asking about the flaw cameras as this afternoon, I was told that seventeen of the twenty flaw cameras have been installed and are operational with the next three being operational by sometime next week. This project took a little longer than expected only because the technology was purchased using grant funds, which required additional authorities and sign offs from state and federal partners. But again, they are up and running. There is a training component to this for my staff. So we project that the flaw cameras will be completely operational and in use by this time next month. Some other projects that you see up there that I want to bring to your attention and going back to the efficiency, it's highlighted there right in the middle is the CAD and the RMS system. The CAD is our computer automated dispatching platform and the RMS is our records management system. I found early on in speaking with our staff that even though we had technology onboard, it just was not conducive to what I was asking of my staff and the workload that they had to produce. At the time when it was purchased and brought onboard, perhaps it was sufficient at that time, but based on what we need to do day in and day out, it's not meeting our needs. It's causing repeated work steps and also in some cases manual verification before we're able to push out and or report those findings. And then lastly, our body worn camera and in car systems, we've been looking at vendors. We identified one vendor that we're going to continue having conversations with that offer a ten year plan. Without mentioning their names, they are probably the platform that a majority of law enforcement agencies use. So we started conversations with them. And then lastly, the multi-phase police facility expansion. I'll be coming back to you along with our Public Works Director on December seventeenth, excuse me, September, December seventeenth to discuss this plan. Right now, as you know, and as we've spoken about in prior council meetings and individually, there is a need for, to upgrade the police department facility. And one of those projects is right there. And so we will be bringing that to you in the coming months and at the same time wanting to provide what is best for our employees and, and what they expect. Some partnerships that we're continuing with, some are new, some are existing. We continue to partner with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, their mental health evaluation team, not only in collaboration and trying to identify those individuals that are in need of mental health services, but also they are a great training partner in being able to provide wide variety of training for our staff, not only our sworn, but our professional staff as well. Taking some, some funds from one of our wellness grants, I started a, an arrangement with the Counseling Team International. Chief Steve Wallace uses it for his team. And looking at that, I found that it was not in play at the PD. This is a renowned organization that helps and is available twenty-four seven, three sixty-five for first responders. So taking some money from a grant, we started a partnership with them. And the great thing about the Counseling Team International, they don't only provide and come out to the police facilities post critical or traumatic incident. They are also able to provide counseling on a personal level and all of that is completely confidential. As of this afternoon, I was told when we get an invoice from the counseling team, we're just told that it's being used and by a, by the number of employees that are using it. So again, it's strictly confidential. I was happy to hear that we just started with this just around a month or two ago and that it's already being used by our employees. So I hope to continue using that. And then also with Didi Hirsch, who, the organization that deals with the mental, mental health and suicide prevention, looking at them to help train our staff and bring awareness to first responders and some of the stressors that come with the profession. And lastly, Blue Line K-9 L.A., they were in our station around a week ago. This is a nonprofit five oh one C three organization that provides service dogs to first responders, looking to bring MOU or an agreement before you, hopefully next month, if not by the end of the year at the very latest, to start a partnership with them so that they can start providing services on a regular basis. Basically bringing in the service dogs to our station during the day, during the night and making visits as well as like the counseling team being available twenty-four seven, three sixty-five should we have a critical incident and we have a need for them to come in to help our officers. Moving on to our different bureaus, starting with our communications bureau, it's led by one lead dispatcher and seven, seven dispatchers. Our newest dispatcher, she's scheduled to be off of training within the coming weeks. So we will be fully staffed with eight great communication dispatchers. Being told and speaking with staff, this is the first time in several years that the communications dispatch center has been fully staffed. It was when I came on to the organization, it was short-staffed and it was being supplemented by sworn police officers sitting in as a second dispatcher. I'm happy to say that that is no longer occurring and they do. Happy to say that that is no longer occurring and they do great work. Just to show you some numbers that are coming out of our dispatcher center in 2023 and 24, these are the type of calls and the number of calls that they're taking. What's most impressive here are that despite our shortages in staffing in '23 and now being fully staffed, our 911 calls are answered within the first 10 seconds. And that's very impressive and I'm very proud of each of their efforts. And then just looking down at the bottom, just, those are what I call community interactions. Those are interactions, whether it's a 911 call and/or a non-emergent call, just trending under thirty-nine thousand in '23 and just over forty thousand year-to-date. So again, I'm very proud of their efforts. And I expect, you know, that they will continue doing what the community wants. Moving on to our Records Bureau, they have a tremendous workload. And I'll show you some data just as a, just as an example and as a visual. But just up until recently, around two weeks ago, we were, again, short-staffed. And where I found, what I found in my analysis was that even though we had personnel in different bureaus, we were lacking in support staff. And this was one of the areas where I brought on a part-time administrative assistant to help out with the workload. And then our newest record specialist, just starting around 10 days ago, Fast Learner already helping people at the front counter. This is just a little of what our records personnel do. They're the point of contact at the front counter. They're processing all the reports. Most importantly, down at the bottom, and this is where it comes into our CAD and RMS system, where we're running into some difficulties and looking to replace it, is when it comes to our mandated DOJ reporting, that is taking quite a bit of time because we need to be accurate in what we report. I do not want to be in, fall into a knotted period with DOJ. So the staff works very diligently, but their efforts are somewhat hampered based on the technology that we have in-house. And that's why I'm looking forward to vetting different vendors, which we have already started. This is just a snapshot of numbers that, that the Records Bureau is working with. This is for 2023. Every single heading up there and every digit up there goes through our records division. And so again, I applaud their efforts. I couldn't be more proud. And again, I'm trying to create efficiency across the board. And again, going back to the CAD and RMS system needing updating. That's a snapshot of 2024. The numbers are not decreasing. If anything, they are continuing to increase based on the activity out in patrol and more so dealing with the courts and the DA. Property and evidence, this was one area that I saw that needed immediate attention. Roughly for the last 28 years, the property and evidence section was staffed by only one property and evidence technician. I came to the city manager and later to council. And I appreciate you approving the addition of one additional property and evidence technician. They have their hands full. And the property and evidence tech that we just brought on to complement our original one, she came with experience. She came from a neighboring agency to our east. So they've been very hard at work and tasking them with a lot. But as you can see up there, a majority of their time is not truly processing property and evidence. And so that's where we're having a backlog. A lot of their time is spent with discovery requests from the courts, reviewing body worn cameras, footage, and public request acts. But again, very proud of them as well, as they are chipping away and trying to, with the right retention periods, purge the evidence that can be purged rather than wait on it and sit on it. Community Engagement Bureau, you know all of these folks. They are tasked with branding our organization out to the community. They do a tremendous job and I'm very proud of their efforts as well. The Community Engagement Bureau, not only is branding our police department to the community, they have their daily duties as well. They are responsible for the partnering, the partnerships and fostering new partnerships with the community, working with the schools, working in collaboration with city departments to ensure that we have enough security and police presence at city events. And their big event is National Night Out. That takes several months to plan. And our last estimate for this year's attendance was roughly around 5,000 people. So again, very proud of their efforts. These are some numbers with regards to the Community Engage, Engagement Bureau. Under that umbrella, we have the Mental Evaluation Team and our School Community Engagement Team. These are just some of the numbers that they are working with. What I found very promising, and I don't think, I don't know of any other agency that is doing this, but when our officers are dealing with those individuals that are having a mental health emergency, we actually do follow-up. And they go out to try and make sure that the person and/or family is receiving the services that they need. So that is really unique. I had not heard of follow-ups only because of the numbers that are normally generated with people needing mental health help. Sometimes it falls to the wayside, definitely not here in San Gabriel. So again, efforts to them. And then we had a really great collaboration with our Community Engagement Bureau, our district lieutenants. And we had a breakfast back on June 29th in the morning over at the Playhouse. And we had around sixty-six block captains in attendance. This was an opportunity for the district lieutenants to meet with their respective neighborhoods rather than me hearing the good and the concerns. The lieutenants were tasked with doing that. And we were out there for a few hours and got very positive feedback. And to their credit, on top of everything else, year-to-date, this, the, this group has hosted and put together fifty-two community engagement events. So again, very proud of their efforts. This one jumped off the page and had to double and triple check the numbers. When I came on, shortly after I came on, the Community Engagement Bureau started taking over and managing our social media. Social media, to this day, is a force multiplier for any organization. And the more that we are engaging with our community, I believe the more support that we can have and more dialogue can be had. When I took it over, we were just over 1,200 followers. As of this month, we're at 3,500 followers, which is around 187% increase. So I'm very proud of that. Again, double and triple check the numbers and they checked out per Google, so I'm very proud. And right now, I have a challenge out to all of my staff to come up with reels that highlight their work and/or if it's humorous or trying some different form of engagement through social media. So we hope to have those reels out to the public by this time next month. The cool guys in the room, I think there's a few of them here. I asked for different sections to send photos. These guys sent me around forty-five photos of themselves, so. And if you can see down on the bottom, they saved a dog. And if there's not a picture, it didn't happen, so they took the picture. But Sergeant Gosran and his team do an outstanding job. They are tasked with so much. And I'm, again, proud of all of their efforts. These are just some of the numbers that I wanted to share with you from 2023 and 2024. As you can see, everything is trending upward. Also asked for them to provide the three, the top three primary collision factors, traffic-related, as far as the top three moving violations that drivers are being issued citations for. So that's just a snapshot of what they're doing. And again, there's only a few of them, but they're out there doing the work. Where I'm really proud of their efforts, and again, I gave him props a few council meetings ago with Sergeant Gosran and to his team, looking at the grants that they have generated, that's just slightly over half a million dollars in grant funds, whether it's the STEP, the Selected Traffic Enforcement Program, or the CHP Cannabis. There's a lot of equipment that will be coming before you in the form of staff reports that they are looking to buy. And again, this is led by Sergeant Gosran and his team. And he's tasking his team to take pieces of the, pieces of the pie to also develop their skill set as well. So again, that is traffic. Patrol, the backbone of our organization, these are the men and women driving out in our communities, keeping our communities safe day in and day out. And they do a tremendous job. And this is where I see the community really having positive interactions with our, with our folks out there. Speaking of patrol and our staffing, this is an area of concern that we are looking at as an organization. Right now, in a perfect world, we would have four patrol teams comprised of a lieutenant, a sergeant, and six patrol officers. Current staffing, the ratio is twenty-four officers to eight, or it should be twenty-four to eight. Currently, it's at seventeen officers to eight supervisors. And in December, it's going to drop down to seventeen officers to four supervisors. And that is projected for some retirements and some resignations that will be taking place the last week of December. Patrol teams right now, three of them are running with two supervisors and four officers. And I have one actually running with two supervisors and three officers. What complicates our staffing model is that we have mandated training that we have to complete and creating vacancies, more vacancies within patrol because the mandated training is normally and generally department-wide. Then we have our, you know, our sick calls, those employees that are on FMLA, some on admin leave, and then trying to schedule in their well-do vacations. So that does create even more overtime and shortages. And we're trying to keep a lid on that and do the best we can to keep patrol afloat. That comes in the form of voluntary overtime, forced overtime. And lately, have had to pull from our special assignments, our traffic, our CEB, and our Investigations Division to fill those vacancies. Despite our staffing challenges that I believe we will get over, I want to let council know and the community know that we are doing everything that we can to keep our recruitment efforts up. And I'll share that on a different slide. But despite the challenges that we are having at a patrol level, you can see the numbers and the productivity that the officers continue to do. It's challenging for them because they are, excuse me, working a lot of overtime. But for the community, they are committed to keeping it safe and looking at the self-initiated calls for service versus the calls that are generated out of our dispatch. So I want to assure, even though our officers are short-staffed right now, we project a greater shortage after the first of the year and into the spring, they continue to do the hard work day in and day out. So please rest assured, that is not wavering. Again, just a snapshot of some patrol numbers for 2023. These numbers have been updated since this PowerPoint was built. The numbers are trending upward. And just you can see what patrol was producing in 2023 and then also in 2024 year-to-date. Again, very proud of all of their efforts, even though it's a patrol bureau. The way the San Gabriel Police Department works, everybody comes and helps out. And again, in the name of public safety for the community, being a priority. Our Investigations Bureau, they are also tasked with several pieces of work-related duties day in and day out. One lieutenant, one sergeant, seven detectives. In late December, last week of December, we'll have a longtime employee retiring. That'll take me down to six. And I know that slide says seven and six, but it's actually going to go to six and five. That was a mistake on my part. And this was another section where I found that there was no support staff in place. So brought on a part-time administrative assistant. I believe she is here tonight in the back somewhere. There she is, doing a great job and helping our detectives keep up with their casework and caseloads and special projects. Just a snapshot of our Investigations Bureau work product for 2023. As you can see, the crime reports and the arrest, all of those have to be filtered through our Investigations Division. So they do have a heavy workload. And as you can see down towards the bottom in 2023, the DA case filings. Snapshot of 2024, again, the work is not slowing, it's just increasing. But again, proud of their efforts, their due diligence and trying to make sure that those who are arrested are held accountable and making sure that we're filing our cases with the DA. Our Recruitment and Training and Equipment Bureau, it says Bureau. I know there's two people up there and jokingly, that Bureau consists of one officer, Officer Gilbert Lee, who is on the right. He has a support staff for the recruitment team, but he also has a tremendous workload. And in looking and analyzing what he was tasked with, again, definitely need, definitely in need of support staff. So we brought on a part-time admin assistant for him, who's been working side-by-side with him on a daily basis and trying to help him with his workload. Gilbert does a great job with the recruitment and onboarding, collaborating with our, our team over at Human Resources to try and identify qualified applicants and bring them onboard and into the process. What you're looking at right now is just the allotment and the current personnel that the San Gabriel Police Department is allotted, actually has, and some movement. As you can see, under the lieutenants, the third down, we are currently fully staffed. But in December, I am projected to lose two who have already announced their retirements and one possibly in 2025 around the same time. With my sergeants, we're again fully staffed, but I know I'm losing two. Definitely by the end of the year, one possibly this month or next month. With our officers allotted for thirty-nine, we're actually at thirty-two, have three on administrative leave for various reasons and one on modified duty. The officer working modified duty is assisting in our communications center. Overall, in 2024, if all projects, projections stand, I'll have lost six police officers for either laterally now retiring, resigning, or other, and one projected to leave in 2025. Out of those, I have three in field training, some just starting, some one ahead of the other two. But they all are projected to be off of training by March of 2025. And currently fourteen in the hiring process. Now, the fourteen is a great number, but in our business, we know we will be lucky if we get four out of that fourteen for various reasons. We tend to see those numbers significantly drop when they get into the background investigations and only wanting to bring on the best for this community. We are very selective in that. The dispatchers, again, allotted for eight, showing seven, but our newest dispatcher is expected to get off training. So that will be a full complement. And currently, two in the police academy right now that are scheduled to graduate in March of 2025 from the Rio Hondo Police Academy. And then, once they graduate and if they're successful there, they'll start their six-month field training with an FTO out in the field. Wanted to just share some future recommendations for staff enhancement. One thing that the San Gabriel Police Department does not have is a corporal position that's normally identified by two stripes on their uniform. We do have officers that have two stripes on their uniform, but that's to signify that they're an FTO. Neighboring agencies have corporals or agents, and it's a first-line-level supervisory position. Right now, we have an application process open for sergeants, promotional and lieutenants. and lieutenants promotional to address our needs. Is it possible, yes, for an officer to become a sergeant? Absolutely, absolutely, and it's done a lot. However, without the corporal position, it just makes that learning curve much harder. And it puts more onus on the organization and the leadership of the organization to get them up to speed. I believe by creating a corporal position within the organization will afford opportunity for growth and development and also lead into our succession planning. I'd also like to, in the coming years, create at least two police service officers. These are non-sworn positions. Many organizations, practically all of the organizations around us have them. I was told at one point that we had these positions, but we're no longer filled. These are positions that can help supplement the officers from taking cold reports to helping them tow vehicles, to helping community members at the counter. They can do a variety of tasks, and they're trained by our police officers. And then, after the training phase, they're out on their own handling and supplementing our patrol officers. The great job that Gilbert Lee is doing, outstanding work. But in looking at this, I truly feel that that position can be civilianized. It doesn't need to be a sworn police officer. And if we're able to accomplish this by fiscal year '26, '27, that's one more officer out in the field that can be helping the community. To Gilbert's credit, when there are priority calls for service, I often see him running out of the building with his vest to help. So again, doing what he should be doing on the daily, but also there for his partners out in patrol. So again, I think if we civilianize this position, it's just one more officer out in the field, and I think the community would appreciate that. And then increase our overall numbers in staffing to 60 by at least '26, '27 fiscal year. As discussed, in 20, I'm sorry, in 2009, the department was allotted 58 positions. I understand because of the condition, the financial condition of the city and during the recession, those numbers went down, but they were never brought back up. I believe that 60 officers, at least within the next few years, is doable, and there's definitely work for those officers, for those officers out in the field, especially trying to bring up the numbers in our patrol teams to a full complement of two supervisors and six officers per shift. That is my presentation, and thank you, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Alazade, and I really appreciate your great leadership. And thank you, everyone in our PD. Thank you so much for keeping our community safe and also make us so proud to have a city of San Gabriel with a PD. So now, do we have any questions? Any council member have a question for Chief to answer or clarify?
Sure, I'll start. Just real quick, Chief, great job on the presentation and also great job with your leadership. And it looks like our PD is heading in a great direction, and you guys are doing really, really well. Quick, easy question, but when you were mentioning on your slide about the media, the social media that you guys are doing, is that just for the PD or is that social media for the whole city?
We have a dedicated page or pages on different platforms for the PD. But in collaboration and in partnership with other city departments, if there's a special event like dumplings and beer, we'll help promote that and market that. And to their credit as well, they help promote us.
Okay, but the stats here are just for the PD page?
PD page only, yes.
Thank you. That's all. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chen. Anyone else? Yes, Vice Mayor Minchaca.
Thank you, Chief. I'll try to keep it brief. Let's see, it was about a 30-minute presentation, so.
Sorry, I went 10 over. Sorry, guys.
That's okay.
But they're still here. Good.
Yeah, we're all here, limited. Talking about that, so one of the comments I got from one of the residents is that they wanted this presentation in the front, not in the back end. So something for us to think about. Public safety is very important, especially PD, so maybe we should consider that, Mark, and colleagues, to put it up front. You know, the same level of interest might not be with other departments, but definitely with our police. Maybe Greg, maybe Greg's important too, but at this point, it's police. I wanted to ask regarding the Talk of the Town. You know, you've had it for a year, and you can now evaluate it. I've seen it go from the same three people to your recent one at Coolidge seemed like it was, you know, 40 people. It was a really good response. Now that you're entering your second year with Talk of the Town, are there any quick changes you want to make, or are you just going to give it another year? Or, you know, what are you trying to do?
What I'm trying to accomplish, and I believe that we're off to a good start, the team and I, is making ourselves available to the community and not just on the same night of every month and not just inside this chamber, to all the different segments of communities that make up San Gabriel. I want to make sure that myself and my staff are making ourselves available to hear their concerns. So I want to continue and plan to continue with it. And if it's only three or four, I'm happy with three or four. If it's a larger crowd, I'd be very happy with that. And we have seen some larger crowds depending on the geographical area and the time and day that we're doing it. My staff works really hard to try and pick different times and segments, again, of the community that we haven't hit. I believe it's important, I truly believe it's important, that any community member has access to the police department and not only having to go to the police station to find us, but that we're out actively trying to see conversations and build relationships with them, so.
So you're going to continue on with it as your answer?
Most definitely.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, maybe, and maybe you've done this already, like the markets, like Hawaii Market, 9-9 Market, Good Fortune Market, just an idea. Because it does seem to be a hub, and there's always people there, so something to consider for the future. Regarding block captains, I know we have an impressive number of block captains, but there still seems to be a need out there to have more, more gatherings. Is there any strategies there? I know I try to publicize it, I try to encourage people to do something and to take that, you know, take the lead, but the thing about block captains seems to scare people. Not everybody could be like a Sue Fitzsimmons, but yeah. But it is so important just to bring together communities and neighborhoods because, you know, we're still, you know, there's still some residual there from the pandemic. And, you know, it's just so helpful. I mean, there's some blocks that are just so, so close, and they do this on their own. I don't even know if they really have official block captains, but they have those gatherings. Is there any strategies you're thinking about with that?
That falls under our Community Engagement Bureau, and their task was trying to build that. That was a directive that I had and a challenge that I had set for them is to increase the numbers. And again, I think in part it has to do with residuals from the pandemic and that we live in a world where everybody has their cell phones. And even though your neighbors are across the street neighbors from somebody, it's very easy to pick up the cell phone and text somebody. I would like to return to a time in our not-so-distant history where community members came out and spoke to one another, and they spoke about, maybe not just about the police and the first responders, but just got to know each other. So again, that is something that I'm working towards, something that I challenged them to increase. And again, making sure that we're available for them for their needs. But it is challenging, but we're not going to stop.
Okay, just ongoing then.
Correct.
Okay, and then, let's see. Regarding our recruitment, of course, it's a great concern for us as council, but as I speak to other council members in other cities, it's the same situation for a variety of reasons. You know, we just don't have the number of candidates that we used to have. And again, it could be the pandemic. But along those lines, have we thought about, you know, you talked about non-sworn officers, which is good, kind of take away that, the paperwork, the clerical, the admin, that you don't need to be an officer to do. It's connected, but if there's other ways. But something like remote work, I know you have to be out there in the field, but is that a possibility at all, or do you see that in the future for officers? Or is it more just quality of life, you know, having more set hours? Because as we have our officers retiring, you know, we do have a lot of younger people who are raising families, and so quality of life is just so important. What kind of strategies do we have for that? Because, you know, there is compensation, and that's something we will deal with and address. But it's so much more now, especially for that next generation, and all types of work. And accounting, I mean, those days are gone where, you know, you work 60 hours and you don't blink. And that's not happening now in accounting. They are not as accepting as I was in those days.
Yeah, me too. Dang lazy kids.
I call it lazy, they just have a different priority. 60 hours, you know, is not what they like anymore, but.
You and I did it.
Yeah, I know, we did, but for our officers, and especially the young ones, the younger ones, what can we do? Is there any ideas, and I don't know, maybe there's anybody from, you know, you have your crew there. I don't know if they have any ideas, but, you know, if you're raising a family.
They would love to work from home, believe me.
Pardon?
I said they would love to work from home, believe me.
Yeah, I know, no, but I'm just wondering what other agencies are doing? Because I've asked, I've asked other cities, and, you know, we're all kind of glossy-eyed, and we're like, well, we need our officers out there, which I agree with. But there has to be something, and all I can, you know, we've talked about quality of life and, you know, knowing your hours. For now, everyone's got to work overtime because we're just so short. But is there something we can do during this difficult time to make it less difficult? You know, maybe I'm being idealistic, which is a possibility. But, you know, do you have any ideas or anything you can share, especially with the public and with us?
I would be open to that, and in the sense that obviously it would be limited to more administrative staff. Again, patrol, they have to be here.
Yeah, it's impossible if it's your patrol, but not everybody does patrol.
But you mentioned a good point that's a priority for me, and that is, number one, my officer's safety, my officer's physical health, and their mental well-being. And that does come into play. So if and when we get up to speed and our numbers in patrol have increased and we're fully staffed, I would be open to looking at a variety of different options in not so much a patrol officer working from home, but perhaps we get to a day very soon where we have enough staffing, where that officer that would typically work patrol can go work a special assignment for the day or for his work week, depending on our staffing needs. So creating opportunities like that, completely open to. As far as working from home, again, I think a little more challenging in the sense that it would have to be more of an admin and/or possibly even records. But then there's also limitations as to the transmission of certain classified data that we're dealing with. And to have somebody work from home could be challenging. Doesn't mean it can't be done, but again, something that I would be open to looking at.
Well, since there's so many of them over there, any of you would like to say anything? It's 10 o'clock, so if there's any feedback or anything you would like to add, I'd love to hear from any of you. Don't be shy.
I'll get all the emails in the morning.
I guess they're all shy? Officer, is it Just? I'm sorry, I can't see. Did you want to say something? I'm sorry, Justice over here. Okay, well, I thought I'd give you an opportunity to speak. Let's see, and then lastly, I have to mention, you know, I did the, well, we spend an afternoon with a police officer. A ride-along, thank you. Ride-along, and this time, I didn't do it at night, I did it during the day. And I can tell you, probably at least 40% of the time was addressing the homeless population. And we don't have the numbers like other cities do. I think the latest count is 31, but we know it's probably more. But then they transition from city to city, but that's a lot of time. And I know, Mark, you said you were at some point going to bring a homeless presentation of how we want to address it. I know Mayor Wu and yourself went to, I think it was in Arcadia, there was some kind of conference. So some of those ideas are going to be brought forward. But I know it's very time-consuming for our officers, and I didn't see anything here about it. Maybe I missed it in your presentation, but how is that being addressed? Because that, I mean, the officer I was with, literally, it was like 40%, it was from one place to the other. And, you know, it just became a safety issue for them, for the homeless person, but also a safety issue for the business owner. And so it's a lot of time being spent. And again, if we're looking at how we can best utilize our officers, I didn't find that to be the best way of doing it. I think, you know, if we have some kind of, and I know we have a MET program already, but there's just too much, or it just happens all of a sudden when you're driving around. Can you address that in some way?
It is a challenge to our staffing model in the sense that we just never know when that call is going to come out regarding a homeless person. And again, to be homeless doesn't mean that equates to criminal activity. What I directed my staff to do, and I believe they do a really good job with this, especially looking at the people that are under mental health evaluations and the follow-ups that we're doing. It's difficult, and it's a burden on the staffing in the sense that it is time-consuming. But my challenge to them and my directive to them is go out and not just simply put a Band-Aid on the issue, but truly look for long-term solutions. So a lot of the training that the staff goes through, we have our part-time clinician that works out of our Community Engagement Bureau, and then the clinician that also works through our city, trying to offer them services. Right now, there's really no way around it as, because there's no other apparatus in place when it comes to calls for service related to homeless and/or transients that don't want to leave or dealing with some type of mental episode. That in itself doesn't even mean that it's criminal. So again, directing my staff to try and offer them services, but also that if those individuals were continuing to be called on and they are breaking the law, my first priority is compassion and trying to get them help. If that fails, then we will continue to hold people accountable, especially if they're breaking the law. But right now, not just with San Gabriel, but anywhere in the law enforcement.
Yes, exactly. I know everyone, but, you know, in my short little period of doing the ride-along, I think it was about three hours, there was three different stops we made, and all three were relating to homelessness or a homeless individual. None of them were threatening, but that pulled the officer from doing something that was threatening. And hopefully, in this presentation that we have, that we can add some resources to free up our officers to do what they need to do and hopefully reduce their hours too, so they don't have to work so much overtime. So anyway, I do look forward to that presentation, Mark. Do you have a date yet for it, or no? Pardon?
Sorry, I don't, but I'll put it on the agenda schedule.
Okay, okay, and that was all. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
To everybody here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So who's next? Councilmember Ding?
Thank you, Chief, the presentation. But on the, I saw your report on the Investigation Bureau. On the paper, it says six detective, and the five detective will be retired on the end of this year. So how can you recruit the new one? Yeah, the presentation is seven, the six, here it's five, six or five.
You have the more updated power slide in front of you, so those numbers should reflect currently. currently six detectives and going down to five. That's one of our challenges that we're going to have, that we need to look at ways in which we build a matrix in being able to study which investigations or which crime reports get investigated. Go ahead. I'm sorry. So that is challenging, so other agencies have a matrix as to, just because there's a crime report that comes across a detective's desk or into the bureau, doesn't automatically mean it's going to be investigated, especially if the suspect information is very limited. And what we do a good job with right now is that when we clear those type of investigations, we send out letters to the victims, letting them know that we do look at the crime report, but there's nothing further that we can move on, rather than not communicating with them and them being under the impression that something is being done about their case. So it is going to be challenging, especially, I believe, in late winter, early spring, when we're projecting to have a significant shortage, having to pull some detectives. But we will address that, but it will be challenging.
Mayor, interrupt. I think maybe Councilmember Ding is misunderstanding. You mean that there's seven detectives, but then there's going to be six in December because one retired, right? Not meaning six will retire. I think maybe, is that what you were asking?
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, I'm sorry, yes.
He thought you meant that six are retiring.
No, no, no.
It's going from seven to six because one is retiring.
Okay. What you have in front of you, it should read six to five, but yes.
Whatever it is, but you're going down by one.
Just short one, right?
Yeah, he misunderstood about you.
Yeah, and due to our priority in patrol and getting those staffing numbers up, there will be an opening in investigations, but I can't fill it right away because the priority is patrol staffing levels.
Just one step short. Yeah, my feeling, I'm surprised why you did this.
He was very concerned.
Oh, no.
That's like, the seven were retiring.
Thanks, the clarify, okay. So, and for the officer, I saw you have, should be 39, right now 32?
We are allotted 39, and I believe we are at, yes, I believe that's correct, going back.
Yeah, the next...
And some are in the academy, some are in training, but again, I have to account for the, I think I passed it, I have to account for those that are looking to retire, resign, and/or leave the organization by the end of the year.
So you're hiring processing, it's 14, so it's already have the 14 candidate we can have?
Those 14, that number 14 represents the number of candidates that internally, that Officer Gilbert Lee and his assistant are trying to process. So they're in various stages of the hiring process. Again, that number 14, in all likelihood, will leave us with maybe three or four potential candidates that we can hire during the various stages of the background. That's where we find that we have to disqualify applicants because of behavior or past history with them.
Okay, so 14, potentially only maybe three or four we can qualify.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Ding, and Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank you for a well-received report, it was excellent. This is the type of stuff the community needs to know. I'm sorry. The community needs to know about just the state of the Police Department, and the fact that we're putting on YouTube really helps, because then people go back and refer to, getting this all at once is not easy. I presented it, and I do want to congratulate you on your anniversary of a year, that's a milestone.
Thank you.
Once you make that first year, then it gets like a little more stable, a little like, "Oh, I made it." I do congratulate you on that, and I really want to thank you for your leadership. From the transition period, it's not easy to take over, and the fact that, I've talked to a lot of your officers and staff, and they really do appreciate the environment you've created and just the trust they have for you. And that's, you know, as you know, in this industry, that's the number one thing you have to have is the trust, because once that's gone, it's not a functioning department anymore. So I really do appreciate the values that you bring and just the leadership, so...
Thank you, sir.
The details of the report are there, they speak for themselves, that we're facing an uphill battle because crimes are getting more prevalent and we're getting less staffs. We really, I trust your leadership in getting us past that, so thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Harrington. Sorry, I did not know that you turned it off. Well, Chief, thank you so much again for the great report. I just have a few questions regarding the project. For example, the flock cameras, you mentioned that we have already got 17 flock camera installed in our city, and now is operational.
They're operational in the sense that they're functioning, however, my staff has not started using them. There's a training component that we have to train our officers on how to use the system, and there's also a policy component that we need to put in place with regards to the use of the flock cameras. So they are physically there, they are operational, but my staff has not begun to use them, and we project by this time next month, if not sooner, my staff will be using them. And that will, more than likely, it's projected, going to increase our numbers across the board.
So how many flock cameras total this time that we will get that installed in the city?
So there's 17 and three that are pending, that should, I was told, should be in place and operational within the next week.
So not 25, but 20?
I believe it was 20.
20?
There will be 20.
20, okay, got it, thank you. And also regarding the drones, then I remember that we used to have discussed the drones, that two of them will be in service for law enforcement, so do you have any update about the drones?
So that is one of the projects that is on our radar. Again, as much as I want to get that up and running, it's going to create staff and training, and right now, as important as it is, I want to focus on getting our numbers up and making sure that our patrol levels are sufficiently staffed. But my projection is by this summer that they will be operational.
Will be operational, thank you. And it looks really great that you see we have 187.6% increase on the subscriber, right?
On the followers on social media, yes.
And I think, you know, I'm one of your followers as well.
Thank you.
I noticed that the highest likes rate will be Bentley. Bentley has a really high, you know, people love the R-Canine units, but I know that Canine units take times and they do have a certain period of time for service. So do we have any plan about the Canine to having a new Canine coming in? Because we used to have Addy, but Addy retired. Do we have any update about this?
I don't have an update for you. I wasn't quick to replace the Canine that retired. Again, focusing on our staffing levels, it does take an exorbitant amount of time to get, not only select a Canine officer, but get that training done and then into patrol. So my answer is not no to a future Canine. Just right now, I want to focus on our staffing numbers.
Got it. And regarding the national night outs, I do, I have spoken with several block captains, and they said, "Oh, I really miss the old days that when the national night out is not only in one spot, but there will be outreach to every different street." So have you heard something about this from other captains as well?
I have, and I've had some discussion. Again, that's, I think, how it originally started, as first responders going out to the different neighborhoods or the block parties, as well as elected officials. But my understanding is that the number grew, and with today's traffic congestion, realistically, we would only be able to spend only a few minutes at each, because we would have to account for travel time to and from the events. So I've had those conversations, I believe it came up during the breakfast meeting as well. Ideally, to have it in one place where everybody can come together and we can put on a great show, and Community Engagement Bureau brings out some great vendors for all of the families and individuals that participate. I don't think we could achieve that if we were just going from block party to block party, but that is also something, the block parties themselves, that we are encouraging our communities to have, and letting them know that if you would like first responders there, that we could arrange that as well.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much. I think that's pretty much I have for today, but I really appreciate that you have come down a really great presentation. Any other council member have further question? I see none, well, thank you very much, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I believe we have one speaker for public comment, Debbie Kilgore.
Next time, please let our police department or fire department do the very first talk, not at the end, because they've been standing there for over three hours to do their presentation. I just have, there's still an issue about that property, I know you guys approved it, but she didn't answer about the protection where the fire, where the wall needs to be or the fences. All she said is the fencing will be safe, but it's almost like she doesn't even know what the property looks like. But if you've ever been there, that is a not very wide property, and they're expanding the street parking, but still, that fence is very dangerous because it runs the railroad. So I really think that needs to be looked at, and when she comes next time, tell us that. And the other thing is that the rents are all going to be different on that property, because they're looking at the budget, however she described it, which I don't understand. But if you make so much money and you have all the condominium, or, excuse me, the little studio apartment or a one-bedroom, the rents are going to be different. So when the neighbors talk, they're going to find out, "Oh, how much are you paying? How much are you paying?" They're going to find they're all different because of how they're doing, because you don't get a straight answer of how much the rent is going to be. She never said potentially what the rent is going to be for a person there. So how do we know that it's actually low income for people that don't, for seniors? But she never gave that answer. Not at, not one time did she give an answer of what that should be. Thank you.
Next item, please. Oh, do we have more? Any speaker card?
No, sir, would be city manager's report.
Okay, yes, sir. Well, council comments and conference meeting report. Anyone? Okay, I see none, closed session, none, adjournment.
Wait, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Did you ask for a council comment?
I did, I did.
Okay, I'd like to make just a couple, I'll make it quick. All right, all right. On October 3rd, I attended the St. Gabriel City Council Candidates Forum that was hosted by the League of Women Voters. It was very informative, so thank you for everyone who came out. On October 4th, I attended St. Gabriel Dumplings and Beer Fest. It was a great success, and thank you to all our city staff who made it possible, and everyone who came out and participated. It grows bigger every year, so looking forward to next year. On the 5th, I attended a Dinner and Tour of the Mission hosted by the Native Sons of the Golden West. It was a great event, and it was a real nice tour. And that's all I have, so, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Chen, and Vice Mayor, please. Okay, yes, Councilmember Ding?
Okay, yeah, I also have chance go to the October 3rd, it's candidate forum, and yeah, for the, our dumpling beer, right? Okay. And last week, I have a chance to see JPI for the risk management, it's a really good conference to, like, I saw our city manager, Mark, there, and human resource area was there too, so hopefully can bring the, like, it's more like wellness for the, like, working environment. They talk a lot of good topic, yeah. It's, we have to proactive wellness to, like, reduce the city liability, right? Okay, save our future, the insurance premium. Yeah, okay, and then tomorrow, we will go to the Legal City, legal, yeah, California Legal City, the conference too. Hopefully we can learn something too, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Ding, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I wanted to just focus on the public comments we had in the beginning from our community, and so it is regarding candidate George Herrera. I just wrote something out real quickly. I want us to decide what we can do to protect our Chinese voters regarding the misleading title on the ballot for candidate George Herrera. I understand that there's a freedom of speech here, so Herrera can make any untrue claims, you know, being a council member or mayor, it's false, being a city manager or government official, false, currently employed by Republic Traffic Services, false, endorsed by the St. Gabriel Police Officers Association, false, fundraised over $116,000, false, he's self-funded $85,000 in increments of $20,000. But this is not about freedom of speech anymore, it's now about misleading our voters, just like the public has stated. This is a ballot that our voters have depended on to be accurate, and it's not. And whether, you know, it's the city's fault or LA County's fault, but we at the city, what are we going to do to protect our voters from this misinformation, just like the public is asking us? At a minimum, I believe the city should release a statement that the designated title of city manager or government official is incorrect in the Chinese translation of the ballot. So I'm just throwing that out for my colleagues, so for us to discuss. City Attorney, go ahead and chime in, if you like, but I really have an issue with this.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor, maybe let's have our city attorney.
Well, this isn't on the agenda for discussion, so I would encourage you not to discuss it. I will say that the matter has been brought to our attention, and we're going to draft a memo and circulate that to the city council shortly. And then at that point, you guys can decide whether you want to put this on an agenda or not.
But that would be, I mean, we're not going to have a meeting until after the election, because the next meeting's been canceled.
Next meeting's been canceled, oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, next meeting's election night.
Well, we could always have a special meeting if we need to take immediate action.
Okay, so the only one that can call special meetings, the mayor?
Well, yeah.
Because we can't, that's why I'm bringing it during public comment, this is the last time that we can, not that we're going to take action, but it's something that needs to be discussed, it's been brought up, you know, earlier and during public comment. So I am asking, you know, what can we do as a city? If it has to be a special meeting, then so be it, but...
It has to be a special meeting. Our ability to respond to public comment is limited to just making a brief response, which you did, and/or directing things to staff to get back to, and I think I'm seeing some head nods that I assume you want us to do that, so we're going to do that. And then if we have to have a special meeting, we'll have a special meeting.
So in this circumstance, so Vice Mayor would like to, you know, propose a special meeting, does that mean we need at least three votes to say yes, or maybe we just wait until you have drafted a notes?
I'm not yet certain that there's much to be, for the city to do about this, and so I would like to run that question down, present that answer to the mayor, for example, and the rest of the city council, and then decide whether to have another special meeting.
So that's wait until the special notes from our city attorney, then we decide either we need a special meeting or not?
How soon can you have that memo?
I hope to have it this morning, but I looked at a rough draft and I wasn't happy with it, so I understand that it's, time is of the essence on it.
Because this is part of the election law, I mean, how, do you have the expertise with election law?
Personally, no, but I do have people at my firm that can help.
Okay, okay.
Okay, okay, because I consulted, and it's part of the election law, so I'm, it's much more beyond just the city. This is something that should have taken place, should have been done upfront, and now we're kind of circling behind the scenes here or after the fact. So I'm just hoping, whatever that memo says, that we as a city still take a position because people are looking at us to do something, because it's wrong, it's just absolutely wrong, as many of the speakers said earlier. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Keys. Yes, Councilmember Harrington? Nope? Okay, I don't have any report today. Closed session now, adjournment, and the regular city council meeting scheduled for November fifth has been canceled. The next regular council meeting will be held on Tuesday, November nineteen, two thousand and twenty-four, at six thirty PM.